Alrighty, good evening everyone. We'll call to order the April 24th meeting of the Garden Grove City Council. Madam Clerk, would you like to call roll?
Councilmember O'Neill.
Here.
Councilmember T. Nguyen.
Here.
Councilmember Bowie.
Here.
Councilmember Klumpenstein.
Here.
Councilmember Kim Nguyen.
Here.
Mayor Pro-Tam Beard.
Here.
And Mayor Jones.
Here. Who might be leading us in the invocation this evening? Do we have them? You got it?
Yes.
Okay, Maria stiped for invocation and then can I ask Councilmember Kim Nguyen to lead us in the pledge?
Dear Heavenly Father, please be with us this evening to empower us, refresh us, and enrich us so that we may always seek the best solutions and outcomes for our community. Amen.
Raise your right hand over your heart, turn and face the flag after me.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Alrighty, thank you and we will now adjourn to the Housing Authority.
Alright, so we could call roll for Housing Authority, please.
Commissioner Beard.
Here.
Commissioner Beckles.
Here.
Commissioner Bowie.
Here.
Commissioner Jones.
Here.
Commissioner Kim Nguyen.
Here.
Commissioner O'Neill.
Here.
Commissioner Solorio.
Here.
Vice Chair Tuha Nguyen.
Here.
And Chair Klumpenstein.
Here. We'll start with oral communication. I do not have any pink cards. So moving on, we'll go to consent, which can be acted on simultaneously. We have two items there. Two A, receive and file the Housing Authority status report for March 2018, and two B, receive and file minutes from the meeting held on March 27, 2018. Do I have a motion?
Motion.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Call for the vote?
Who was the second?
Commissioner Beckles.
Commissioner Beard?
Yes.
Commissioner Beckles?
Here. I mean, yes.
Commissioner Bowie?
Yes.
Commissioner Jones?
Yes.
Commissioner Kim Nguyen?
Yes.
Commissioner O'Neill?
Yes.
Commissioner Solorio?
Yes.
Vice Chair Tuha Nguyen?
Yes.
And Chair Klumpenstein?
Yes.
Motion received, nine yes votes.
Alright, moving on to matters from Chair Commissioners and Director. Do I have any matters or anything that anyone would like to bring up? Okay, seeing none, we'll go ahead and adjourn. Next meeting will be Tuesday, June 26 at 5:30.
Thank you. We will reconvene the Garden Grove City Council meeting. We have two presentations tonight, two community spotlights. First is 1A.
Okay, so for presentations, we have Community Spotlight in Recognition of the Garden Grove Bulldogs, Varsity Pop Warner Cheerleaders for their National Championships Achieving First Place, Show Cheer and Performance Cheer held at the James Nationals in Las Vegas, and First Place USA Junior Nationals held in Anaheim.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. This evening, the Garden Grove City Council is pleased to recognize Garden Grove Pop Warner Varsity Cheerleaders for their National Championship. Would the Garden Grove Pop Warner Varsity Cheerleaders, Coach Lisa Headsbeth, Coach Isabel Cruz, and Coach Michaela Garrati, please come forward? You can all come, all the cheerleaders too, everybody. Earlier this year, 604 cheer teams from the different states competed at the JAMS Youth Nationals in Las Vegas. The Garden Grove Pop Warner Varsity Cheerleaders received first place in show cheer and first place in performance cheer. The team also won first place in the Small Division II category at the 2018 USA Junior Nationals in Anaheim. Coach Lisa says the varsity team worked hard since last year to represent Garden Grove. They have shown determination, grit, and a sisterhood that cannot be broken, and they brought home first-place awards from almost every competition. According to Team Mom Carolyn Champion, the three-time national champions are Pop Warner Scholar Athletes with 4.0 GPAs, grade point averages. Throughout their journey, the team has been proud to represent Garden Grove. At this time, the mayor and city council would like to present Garden Grove Pop Warner Varsity Cheerleaders, Coach Lisa Headsbeth, Coach Isabel Cruz, and Coach Michaela Garrati with certificates of appreciation in recognition of their National Championship.
That kind of wrapper, like, come on back in here, wrap around this. We should stay out there. Can we all sing Jingle Bells? Would you like to say a few words?
On the microphone?
Please. Yeah, right up there, yeah, yeah.
On behalf of all of us, it has been an honor and a pleasure to continuously represent the great city of Garden Grove. And everywhere we go, everywhere we go, they know here come the Garden Grove Bulldogs. And we're talking at a national level. This was an imagine, like, just a magical year for them to get three national titles in three different venues. Most high schools don't get that. What you do for the youth sports here in Garden Grove is amazing, and we couldn't champion these young ladies today without your support. And we love the city of Garden Grove, and we're proud to be a part of Garden Grove. And tonight, thank you so much for taking the time, and we're honored to be here. And these young ladies, with the backing of their parents, we love this city, and we love these girls, and, you know, we're the team behind the team, and now we have a new team with us, and we appreciate you and thank you so very much. And Carolyn, we can't do it without you, our Team Mom. And so, thank you so much. Thank you, ma'am, thank you.
Thank you all for coming out and congratulations.
Thank you. Congratulations.
You know you're good when there's that many, that much noise from your medals.
Alright, yeah, seriously.
We'll give them just a minute. Hockey dudes, you ready? You're next. Alright, 1B.
We have a Community Spotlight in Recognition of Pacifica High School Hockey Team for their Anaheim Ducks In-Line Scholastic League High School Division Championship.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Would the Garden Grove Pacifica High School Hockey Team, please, and coaches, please come forward? We're very pleased to recognize the Pacifica High School Hockey Team for winning the Anaheim Ducks In-Line High School Hockey League School Division Championship. The team includes Coach Steven Evans, Assistant Coach Brett Tremper, and Team Manager Lori Merrick. Hopefully, they all came forward as well. The Anaheim Ducks In-Line Scholastic League is the direct successor of the Interscholastic Hockey Federation. More than 20 high schools and 10 junior high schools from Southern California take part in the league play. This season, with 13 wins and zero losses, the Pacifica High School Hockey Team recently won the division championship against Norco High School 5 to 2. At this time, the mayor and city council would like to present Pacifica High School Hockey Team Coach Steven Evans, Assistant Coach Brett Tremper, and Team Manager Lori Merrick with certificates of appreciation in recognition of their High School Division Championship. Congratulations. We wish all of them the very best in their future athletic endeavor.
We're there.
It's too early.
It can be photo bomb.
Why is everybody up on that corner? There's more space this side.
Harold.
Hmm? Oh, Neil Orson, that's where we sit too.
Do you guys want to all come up and do the wraparound and take some pictures?
Squada?
Keep going.
our team. They put a lot of hard work into this season, and I think that shows with a 13-0 record. And just for a note, a side note, we are the only in-line hockey team in Garden Grove in any of the high schools, so we totally represent Garden Grove. But thank you again for having us, we really appreciate it.
Thank you guys for all coming out and congratulations.
Congrats, guys. Good job.
Good job, guys. See you, guys. Thank you.
Oh, no.
Yeah, I put it right on.
Yeah, I like to see yours fall off.
We may have more coming in to take seats from people that were leaving or something.
Wait, that one's what, 4A? Let me read it real quick. Okay. Yeah, okay, good call. Good call.
Moving right along, I want to ask that we take one item out of order just because we've got somebody here to receive a proclamation. This would be consent item 4A. So if I could, I'd like to pull forward 4A, which is a adoption of a proclamation declaring April as Community College Awareness Month. And I understand we have somebody here from Coastline? Is it? Yeah.
Should we vote?
I'd like to move it.
Second.
Call the vote.
Member O'Neill?
Yes.
Councilmember T. Nguyen?
Yes.
Councilmember Bowie?
Yes.
Councilmember Klumpenstein?
Yes.
Councilmember Kim Nguyen?
Yes.
Councilmember Beard?
Yes.
And Mayor Jones?
Yes.
Motion received, seven yes votes.
Can we take a couple pictures first?
Sure, absolutely.
I just want to say on behalf of the Coast Community College District, which represents Orange Coast College, Golden West College, and Coastline Community College, how deeply grateful we are for, not only for this proclamation, but by the support of the city of Garden Grove. Coastline College has one of us, one of our three campuses right here about a block away, and we're proud to serve a large population of veteran students as well as military and spouses. And our Garden Grove Center is our Center for Technology, and in fact, one of only four Centers for Academic Excellence in the United States. And we also produce the largest number of degree awards, not only in Orange County but in California. So again, on behalf of our chancellor and our board, thank you so much for this proclamation.
Thank you for being here.
Thank you.
Alrighty, and we will now move on to oral communications. I've got a handful of cards. Opportunity for the public to come up and address the council. We will start with Sherri Williams.
My name is Sherri Williams, and I have lived in Garden Grove for over 34 years. First and foremost, with the increased development of high-density housing and hotels, more people are coming to Garden Grove. That increase mandates a greater demand on our public safety personnel. Garden Grove needs more police and fire personnel just to maintain our current service levels. Regarding the Great Wolf Lodge area, I'd like to know what is happening with the development of the restaurant site next to the Great Wolf Lodge. Why is the Great Wolf Lodge allowing vehicles to park on that city-owned vacant lot, both oversized RVs and vehicles that would fit in the parking structure? Is the city receiving any RV parking fees or any usage fees? Why can they park vehicles on a dirt vacant lot when residents are not allowed to park on unpaved areas? And for all future hotel site developments, would you please make sure that RV or oversized vehicle parking areas are included on that hotel site? Regarding any consideration of ending the 90-year tradition of the Garden Grove Fire Department, please don't. The city of Santa Ana closed their department in order to be served by the Orange County Fire Authority. As the daughter of a Santa Ana fire captain who served almost 40 years with Santa Ana and with family still residing in that city, it is not a good deal for the residents. The community feel is gone. The fire personnel switching stations may come from any part of the county, particularly when filling in for another person. They will not know our streets, our businesses, our traffic patterns, or our people. They will be strangers coming through our city for their allotted shift time with little or no connection or commitment to our city. They will have no loyalty to the city of Garden Grove or its residents, and what will happen to our CERT Community Emergency Response Team? Regarding the proposed resolution by councilperson Beard designating the area of Garden Grove west of Western as West Grove District and an unofficial honorary Garden Grove landmark, I find his resolution to be offensive and an insult to all other areas and residents of Garden Grove. By its wording, councilperson Beard implies that other areas and residents of Garden Grove do not have a profound sense of community pride, are not family-oriented, hard-working, middle-class, all-American, that we are not proud of our heritage, that we do not support and participate in American traditions such as Fourth of July block parties, holiday and neighborhood festivities, Little League, charitable fundraising, school sporting events and activities, the PTA, summer concerts in the park, although we have to drive much farther to get to them since the city most often utilizes the park in the westernmost area of town, the Boys and Girls Club, Boy and Girl Scouts, church services, other family-oriented activities, that residents of the city east of Western Avenue have made no distinguished contributions to society and field such as business, education, science, public office, charitable or humanitarian work, entertainment sports, nor military service. My husband would disagree with that entirely. That there have been no notable residents who have resided east of Western Avenue. Also, councilperson Beard must not realize that Harbor Boulevard in the eastern side of the city of Garden Grove also has an Amber Alert digital sign. The city council of Garden Grove should proudly acknowledge all of its residents and not take part in this divisive and elitist resolution. Thank you.
Hello, my name is Lena Nguyen, and I am currently a resident in District 1, and I'd also like to talk about Representative Beard's proposal. So, when I firstly, initially read it, I was very upset. There are many phrases used in it, such as "all-American," that I found very, there could have been a better way to word it. Like the person before me said earlier, it's very divisive, and separating one part of Garden Grove from the rest of Garden Grove just doesn't sit well, and I think it separates the city even more. And I think there are better ways, and I think, just in general, it wouldn't be that useful to rename West Grove into West Grove officially. I think just renaming something would make people want to go there. And I think if you really do want to increase people and, I mean, pardon me, if you want more people, more businesses to enter that district, I think you should hire proper developers or make use of whatever staffs on Garden Grove and have them take care of that area and renovate it properly, as they've done over here with the new Steel Craft. I think that's amazing, and we didn't have to rename that area, like East Grove or something. And I think just setting that name, West Grove, is just kind of like separating, because residents of West Grove already call themselves West Grove and kind of differentiate themselves from the rest of Garden Grove. And I feel like just drawing that barrier right at Western Avenue, I think, just because that one line separates me from not being all-American, because I just live a few streets over and I'm in your district. And then when I read that, I felt really disheartened because I felt you didn't want to represent me anymore, and I wasn't all-American enough for you. So this resolution just really disheartened me, and I really hope this doesn't go through. If it does go through, I'll come again next week, it's okay. Thank you.
Thank you, Lena. Vicki Hansen.
Hi, Mayor Jones and Councilmembers. I am actually here to address the proposed resolution by Councilmember Beard that would designate the area west of Western Avenue in District 1 to be known as the West Grove District. There is no arguing that is indeed the west side of our city, but we do not need a resolution to acknowledge that to be true. In the proposed resolution, Councilmember Beard suggests that District 1 somehow unique by being all-American and patriotic because the residents there hold parades, Fourth of July block parties, do charity fundraising, PTA, scouts, church, and other family-oriented activities. Every district in our city have residents who do those events. If not one, they do them all. Those things are not exclusive to District 1 residents, and to have a resolution proclaim specific district is more, quote, "all-American" than the others is not sitting well with me. Frankly, I find that wording offensive. However, I do have to believe that Councilmember Beard's resolution definitely is not intended to alienate those outside of his district, but rather, it was a poorly executed draft to bring awareness to his side of town. So if the intent is to designate an area and draw developers to the west side, and there's a belief that having specific name recognition is prudent, why not name it something more specific, possibly Valley View Corridor, and drop the exclusionary dialogue and geographic location that's in the proposed resolution? I ask that you consider something more identifiable along with the lines that we have in place with our resort district, Historic Main Street, Little Saigon, Koreatown, etc. We have our six councilmembers here as I address each of you, and those are to ensure that each of our areas is represented by somebody that lives within that district. So if Councilmember Beard's agenda is to revitalize the district in which he resides and represents, I cannot fault him for that. However, the way in which it's presented, I do take issue with. I'm sure that each one of the city councilmembers wants to revitalize their own city area that they represent. No resolution is needed for that. And let me say that no specific district in our city should be defined more all-American than the others. I trust that each councilmember, Mayor Jones, and the city staff will continue to collaborate for the betterment of all of the Garden Grove citizens. I am excited about the upcoming developments in our city that are already slated, and I want to say thank you for your time and also for your service to our city. Thank you.
Thanks, Vicki. Alex Beard.
Good evening, council, staff, and fellow Garden Grove citizens. My name is Alex Beard. I've been a city, I'm sorry, I've been a citizen of Garden Grove for almost 23 years. I have been very involved in the city and its events, including the Push Cart Derby, Strawberry Festival, Open Streets, and much more. In 2013, I was selected along with other Garden Grove High School students as a student ambassador to the city in our sister city, On Yang, South Korea. Garden Grove has been my home my entire life, and I'm here to speak tonight about the draft of the resolution to name the West Grove District. I believe this will allow economic development to grow in my district and will allow other districts in the city to rebrand- districts in the city to rebrand themselves as well. When I was about six years old, the Chinese gourmet restaurant on Valley View in between McDonald's and Four Star Cinema closed down. The restaurant has remained vacant for almost 15 years. Another family sit-down restaurant, Coco's, closes stores as well and has also been vacant for the past few years. I believe that rebranding West Garden Grove to West Grove District will be beneficial in bringing in more businesses, especially along Valley View Street. Valley View is where the 405 and the 22 meet, and to invest more in that area would be a benefit to the businesses there as well as the city as a whole. I try to buy in Garden Grove where I can, in such places as Rudy's Mexican Grill across the street from Pacifica High School, Harry's Place Down Knott, as well as the Bagery and Bistro in, right on Valley View. But as a millennial, the hottest food places lie just outside of West Garden Grove's limits. From where I live, Seal Beach is a one-minute drive, Cypress is three minutes, Los Alamos, Westminster, and Rossmore are all five minutes away. I love my city, but it takes me 15 minutes to get to the heart of it. I want to buy in Garden Grove, and renaming West Garden Grove to West Grove will bring people back to my side of town. Just because District One is trying to brand itself, doesn't, trying to brand itself first, doesn't mean other districts cannot do the same. Other cities have given their names, their districts' names as well. Anaheim has Anaheim Hills, Packing District, Anaheim Groves. We already have the Korean Business District and Little Saigon. If anything, rebranding West Garden Grove to West Grove will encourage other districts to rebrand themselves and bring business from other cities back here. I applaud the forward-thinking of the council in coming up with this resolution. One of the defining features of America is standing out from the rest while also being unified, individual but indivisible. This resolution is Garden Grove, is, sorry, is West Grove's way of standing out, and I encourage other districts in this great city to do the same. Thank you.
Thank you, Alex. Tony Flores.
Good evening, council. I'm Tony Flores. Yeah, well, let's talk about the SB 54 first. I guess we just said West Grove. That went by a lot of people now before regarding SB 54. Our state claiming itself to be a sanctuary state, we've got bigger problems than talking about just West Grove or any other part of our city. I've sent you folks two emails now to put on rent communications. It hasn't been done yet. Anybody seen the email? You guys see them, just don't answer. Is that right? Okay. Well, we appreciate that. And that's not just for me. It comes from a lot of folks, too. We need to address that. You folks need to take a stand on it and get involved in it. I understand Mayor Troy Edgar sent a letter to you folks. I'll be asking for a copy of that. I haven't read it yet, but get, make a decision, one way or another. You either forward or against it. But when you look at your, the oath that you took, talking about supporting our constitution of the United States and California, you need to do that, sitting silent and then get out of the way. Regarding West Garden Grove, probably one of the few times Mr. Beard and I will probably agree on something, but while the wording may be questionable, West Garden Grove, whether you name it or not, is West Garden Grove. I've had the pleasure of working with people throughout the city. I helped save hundreds of homes in the east end of town, helped form the central organization which calls itself the Garden Grove Neighborhood Association, put that together, helped them with their referendum. Without the people in West Garden Grove, that wouldn't have happened. Helped put 1.2, 1.4 million dollars back into the school district. Helped bring a sound wall to the entire Garden Grove. I live in West Garden Grove, but the boundaries don't apply to at least what I've done, and I'll put my public service record up against not just one of you, all of you at the same time. And I'm talking about the police service where I saved a couple of officers' lives at that time as well. So as far as West Garden Grove, nothing wrong with it, but if you folks are against it, then you need to take down the Little Saigon sign and the Vietnamese district sign as well. So be consistent in your decision-making. That's all I have to say about that. And I wanted to thank Mr. Stiles and Corinne Hoffman. We recently had an alumni golf tournament over in SkyLinkson in Long Beach for Coach Bill Craven and Coach Don Schroggen, probably the most winningest coach in Orange County and certainly he's number two or three in the state. But all of the folks that played football from about 1976 to maybe a couple of years ago showed up, had a great time. We're going to have more of that, but with the help of Mr. Stiles and Ms. Hoffman, we were able to get through the DBA process and make it a successful tournament. We're going to be able to donate some dollars to the Pacifica Football Program as well. Maybe some of you folks can make it out there. Any case, pay attention to your emails, and go West Garden Grove. Go United States. Thank you.
Thanks, Tony. Jamie Hill.
Hello. My name is Jamie Hill. I was born in Palm Harbor Hospital, 1961, so I am from Garden Grove. My dad did career military, so I was gone a lot, but I'm back. I've been back for a while. I am here to discuss SB 54. I respectfully request that this council state in public its legal stance regarding SB 54, a bill that denounces and negates the 14th Amendment of the Constitution of the United States regarding federal immigration law. I attempted to receive an answer privately over two weeks ago, but was ignored. Last Thursday, Secretary Hannity Resolution Number 9409-17. I want to ask the council if this is your legal stance, whereas you are supporting SB 54 and ignoring federal immigration law on behalf of the city. I am asking because someone asked me, is Garden Grove a sanctuary city, and I didn't know the answer. Then in recent discussion with someone else, I was told that in wanting to ask this question, to be prepared to be called racist. Well, I would also greatly appreciate receiving the same courtesy of no discrimination, no prejudice, and no profiling regarding who I am as a person, especially since I am a legal United States citizen. Seems like wanting to follow the law puts you constantly on the defensive these days. The following is issued here for consideration before you answer. Federal immigration law is not about threat, divide, disruption, or lack of compassion, and in fact, I believe it was created for the opposite. I do compassion for a living and provide compassion within the law. There is no choice between one or the other as my license represents. As a CNA, every time I obtain my required 48 CEUs, Continued Education Units, every two years I am reminded of that, and you, as a patient, should be thankful that those in the medical field that are required to provide compassion, at the same time, they are to adhere to the law. Think about that the next time you are in the doctor's office or a hospital. Following the law is not a luxury, and it is not limited to the medical field. Border security is homeland security, is national security. You as government officials are responsible to adhere to same, not one, at the expense of the other. Having only five minutes, I will not read the Constitution of the United States or SB 54 or your Resolution 9409-17 verbiage. I do not want my question answered by political playbook jargon, and I'm not interested in anyone's personal or political agenda. This council cannot, by way of Resolution 9409-17, attempt to fly under the radar in answering my question. This council, as our city representatives, need to either stand publicly and declare to the City of Garden Grove, legal citizens, you are either supporting or denouncing SB 54 and our sanctuary city status. Again, I tried to get an answer privately, and I could not. If you denounce following federal law, I believe as a legal citizen, you are putting me in moral, legal, financial jeopardy, and more importantly, safety is in jeopardy. If by some weird chance one of our Garden Grove legal citizens ends up like a person that we read about in San Francisco, I believe the City of Garden Grove should be held accountable. A decision by bureaucrats in her city government forever separated her from her family in the worst way, forever. Her rights as a legal citizen were ignored, and the rights of the illegal person were put first, and she and her family paid the ultimate price. Key word, illegal. This word keeps being conveniently left out of conversation, and that needs to stop. Our ancestors arrived as immigrants, and immigrants have arrived that today are following federal immigration law. They are not lying, cheating, or manipulating to be here. In summation, I want my government representatives to support me as a legal citizen and uphold federal immigration law and denounce SB 54, not cherry pick what federal laws you do and do not want to adhere to. I now respectfully request that you make a public announcement that on behalf of the City of Garden Grove, you either support SB 54 as a sanctuary city, or you denounce SB 54 and will follow federal immigration law. Thank you so much for your time.
Thank you. Jimmy Davis.
I feel very unprepared after some of the last ones. I found out about the measure here by Chris Beard earlier today. Got off work, was home for about five minutes, and now I'm here. I do support it for one very, one reason that wasn't brought up by some of the last couple of speakers. One big reason is, let me backtrack, tell a little story. I just recently bought a house here in Garden Grove, in West Grove, about a year ago. When I was moving, a lot of my colleagues, I work in LA area, speak with colleagues, and I tell them, oh, where are you buying a house? Garden Grove. Their first reaction is ew, or another term that's a, or nickname that's given to the city. And I have to constantly remind them, or tell them that it's West Garden Grove. It's, on the other hand, it's not where everything, all the other... I'm going off what other people tell me, not my opinion. With that, being designated as West Garden Grove would improve property value because, as I said, when you tell people you live in Garden Grove, they, other people, say ew. Whereas if you say West Grove, they make the distinction, distinguish between the two. What actually also brought me here, which I wrote on my card, is I have from a source who works for the city that a, a sales tax is going to be, attempt to be placed on the ballot, and I want to make sure that's known before that gets snuck in there somewhere or attached to something else. I'm very highly against an additional sales tax for the city. I think that'd be very detrimental to the city, also for small businesses. If sales taxes increase, then people go to other cities to buy their goods and so on. That's all I have to say. Thank you.
Charles Mitchell.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the council and staff. Most of us go through our lives and not worry about emergencies happening. We're fortunate that way, but sometimes things occur that we have no control over. Fortunately, I live in the City of Garden Grove, where we have a magnificent fire department, and their response to emergencies is exemplary. I couldn't believe that we had to call the paramedics twice for my wife, but the response was just incredible. These fire people were exceptionally professional, very courteous, very helpful, and they made a bad experience bearable for my wife. Fortunately, she's back home, and she's on the road to recovery, but I just want to say thank you to the members of our Garden Grove Fire Department. Thank you.
Thank you, Charles. Ariana Arastegui.
Hello, honorable members of the City Council, Mayor Jones, my fellow neighbors of the City of Garden Grove. I did not anticipate to come before the dais today. I thought it was going to be another lovely City Council meeting, let's talk about some benches. But I, I've been alarmed, truly. I've been alarmed by some of the misinformation that some of my fellow neighbors seem to have with regards to the City of Garden Grove and the regulation known as SB 54 with regards to sanctuary city status. Now, I would like to clear the air for some of the people that might not know, but Garden Grove is not a sanctuary city. It is not. It has not declared itself a sanctuary city. Now, earlier this year, they did pass a Harmony City Resolution, which I must applaud our City Council for doing. And to clarify this Harmony City Resolution, let me go forward by saying that it is a statement that says that our police department, which does an amazing and excellent job of securing public safety in the City of Garden Grove, that our police department is going to continue doing what it is supposed to do as a police department, which is maintain the public safety. So let's clear this up, and I see that there is a lot of youth in the audience today, and I'm delighted by that, because let's have a little bit of a civics lesson. Our police department is not the military, and our police department is not Customs and Immigration Enforcement, and it is our police department's job to continue protecting us. And if they are not able to continue doing what we have employed them to do as taxpayers, then by demanding that we take some sort of stance on this, by pushing our council into a corner, by pushing our public servants into a corner, then we are only failing each other. So thank you, council, for having passed the resolution that you passed, and thank you, Garden Grove Police Department, for continuing to provide safety to all of our residents. And with that, I leave you now. Thank you.
Thank you. Jared Wallace.
Hello, my name's Jared Wallace. I've lived in Garden Grove for about five years, and I am a teacher at Garden Grove High School. I also wanted to speak on the SB 54 issue that's been going around and just express my own concern whether the council will join the lawsuit that other cities have joined, and my own point of view would be that wouldn't be embarrassment to the city if we joined with other Orange County cities in joining it, and that we should leave it to California and the federal government to sort that issue out. From my experience with students, I know there's already a lot of fear whether they are here legally or undocumented, and joining this lawsuit would make a lot of them feel even more unsafe than they already do in these times, and I just wanted to share that as someone that interacts with them on a daily basis. Thank you.
Thank you. Nick Dibbs.
Mayor Jones, members of the City Council, citizens of Garden Grove, my name is Nicholas Dibbs, and I'm a teacher and an educator, graduated from Pacifica High School years ago and became a teacher, and then taught in the school district for over 16 years in a variety of capacities. But I want to address a couple of things dealing with education, but before we get to that, the fire, the Orange County Fire Authority was here on March 27th and provided a presentation, and I have to endorse Charles Mitchell in what he said, that our fire department does an excellent job. And if you were to farm this service out to the Orange County Fire Authority, then what's next? The police department, and then the water department? I think what we need to do, I'm just going to suggest, obviously, the council is considering contracting with the fire authority in order to save money. Saving money is a good thing, however, it has to be balanced with the service we receive... Saving money is a good thing, however, it has to be balanced with the service we receive. So I would suggest putting the numbers together, staff put the numbers together, and put it to the vote of the citizens. Either we can save so many million, or a couple million dollars here by contracting out, or if we want to maintain our own fire department, maybe everybody has to pay an extra nickel on their property tax. Whatever the case, I think the vote, the final vote should go to the people of Garden Grove, the citizens of Garden Grove, and let them vote on it, so that you give them the facts and let them decide whether they want to pay just a little bit more in property tax to hopefully maintain our own fire department. Okay, now let's go to the upcoming, first off, I want to thank Mayor Jones and Councilman Beard, Scott Stiles, and Maria Stipe, Assistant City Manager, for putting together the letter to Patrick O'Donnell in support of AB 2591. So thank you for that, for doing that on the, allowing community hospital Long Beach to hopefully stay open so we can use it as an ER if we need it. Okay, now let's go on to, I was pleased to work with the council and, or to bring it up to reinstate Youth and Government Day, but now we have another type of Youth and Government Day, this time with college graduates. And so the, I applaud the staff and the council for putting on the May 8th College Graduates Reception. And I'm just bringing it up to the audience and to those watching, that May 1st is the deadline for any college graduates to submit their online application or mail it in so that they can be recognized at the reception from 4:30 to 6:30 on May the 8th. Last year and this year, I'm the only individual sponsor of that event, along with several other corporate and community sponsors, and it's, it's important that we recognize our college graduates and like the Youth and Government Day program, provide avenues for our high school students. What is all of this about? What all of us in this room hopefully want is a better future and a better society, and so I'd just like to, you know, summarize and say, success, as I prefer defining it, is devoting and utilizing your career, talents, and abilities, helping others and oneself achieve much-needed positive change for a better future nation and world. That's why we're all here, to help make the city and the community better than it is. And so I come before you several different times here and there to propose different things for that purpose. And I did run for the school board in West Garden Grove, and therefore I do support Councilman Beard's resolution. Now, I just want to give an example. If you go over to Long Beach where I was born, you have Bixby Knolls, you have Belmont Shore, you have California Heights, you have different neighborhoods in Long Beach that have different names. So there's no reason why we can't have one name for West Grove, another name for something else, another one for Main Street, and so on. So I encourage you to, to give a name to each community in Garden Grove. Okay, how much time do I have left? 29 seconds. Okay. Okay. So, oh, this is for Councilman Beard, and I'm in support of, let's bring back the, let's bring back the Youth Commission. City of Huntington Beach has a Youth Commission, and they didn't end the Youth and Government Day program and the Youth Commission like we did for about 20 years. They kept it going. So here's the information on the Youth, on the Youth Commission, and I hope we can bring it back. Okay, thank you for listening.
Thank you.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, council members, and city staff. My name is Jonathan Swaim, and I'm a board member of the Garden Grove Neighborhood Association. The GGNA is a nonprofit, nonpartisan, public service organization established in 2003, dedicated to neighborhood improvement to benefit all of the residents and businesses of Garden Grove. I'm here this evening to inform you of and invite you to our 15th Annual Meeting and Backyard Brunch. It will be held June 2nd, 2018, at 11:00 AM. We invite all council members, any staff members, and residents of Garden Grove to attend. This is a great opportunity to meet your neighbors, as well as meet your elected officials. Please follow us on Facebook at Garden Grove Neighborhood Association. Former details and information about this event, we hope to see you there.
Thank you. All righty, that concludes oral communications, so we'll move on to written communications. We do have two different items, two written requests, 3A.
We have tonight a consideration of a written request from the Disabled Veterans and Widow Relief Association to conduct a musical concert and fundraiser at Garden Grove Park, and Ms. Belio is here to provide the report.
Good evening, Mayor, and members of the city council. The Disabled Veterans and Widow Relief Association is requesting city council approval to conduct the 12th Annual Musical Concert and Fundraiser at Garden Grove Park on Sunday, August 12, 2018. The association is a nonprofit organization formerly based in Santa Ana and currently operating in Garden Grove, whose goal is to provide financial assistance for families of disabled war veterans and widows residing in Vietnam. The association is in good standing with the state of California. The city's policy for use of city parks, excuse me, and open space for community events requires the organization conducting an event to be a nonprofit 501(c)(3) organization whose majority focus directly benefits the residents of Garden Grove. Since this fundraising event indirectly benefits many Garden Grove residents, city council would need to waive the direct benefit requirement. Approval of this written request will not have a financial impact on the city's general fund. It is recommended that city council consider the written request from the Disabled Veterans and Widow Relief Association to conduct a musical concert and fundraiser at Garden Grove Park on Sunday, August 12, 2018. Also, consider waiving the requirement on the city's policy on parks and open space for community events pertaining to the direct benefit requirement, and provide direction to staff to prepare a formal agreement between the city and the association that would allow them to conduct the musical concert and fundraiser. This concludes staff's report, and I'm available to answer any questions you may have.
Thank you, Janet.
I'm over here.
Any questions of staff? Questions, comments? No? Motion?
Move the motion.
Second.
Call to vote, roll call vote.
Councilmember Beard?
Yes.
Councilmember O'Neill?
Yes.
Councilmember Tu Ha Wynn?
Yes.
Councilmember Bowie?
Yes.
Councilmember Klavenstein?
Yes.
Councilmember Wynn?
Yes.
And Mayor Jones?
Yes.
Motion received, seven yes votes.
Thank you. 3B.
We have a consideration of a written request by the Garden Grove Unified School District to waive the rental fees of city-owned Showmobile stage, and staff, Mr. Montanes is here to provide the report.
Good evening, Mayor, and members of city council. Before you have a written request by the Garden Grove Unified School District to waive the rental fees of the use of the city's Showmobile for an event scheduled on April the 27th and May 31st of 2018. The school district's Russell Elementary will be hosting an event called Passport to the World on April the 27th, which will honor diverse cultures and countries from around the world and be showcasing students performing on the Showmobile. Also at Russell Elementary on May the 31st, the school district will be hosting an open house featuring an opening ceremony, an awards presentation, then also followed by students performing on the Showmobile as well. The total amount requested to be waived is $500. This amount includes a $250 rental per, rental fee cost per event. It is recommended that the city council consider this request from the Garden Grove Unified School District to waive the rental fees associated with the Showmobile for their events held on April the 27th and May the 31st of 2018. This concludes my report, and I'm available for any questions.
Thank you. Any questions? Call to vote.
Councilmember Beard?
Yes.
Councilmember O'Neill?
Yes.
Councilmember Tu Ha Wynn?
Yes.
Councilmember Bowie?
Yes.
Councilmember Klavenstein?
Yes.
Councilmember Kim Wynn?
Yes.
And Mayor Jones?
Yes.
Motion received, seven yes votes.
Thanks, John. Thanks, Janet. Okay, we're going to recess to other agencies, so we'll move over to successor agency. Madam Clerk, would you like to call a roll?
Member Beard?
Yeah, here.
Member O'Neill?
Here.
Member Tu Ha Wynn?
Here.
Member Klavenstein?
Here.
Member Kim Wynn?
Here.
Vice Chair Bowie?
Yes.
And Chair Jones?
Here.
Okay, we already did oral communication simultaneously with city council, and so we'll move on to consent items 2A through C to be acted on simultaneously. Do I have a motion?
Move the items.
A second.
Call to vote.
Member Beard?
Yes.
Member O'Neill?
Yes.
Member Tu Ha Wynn?
Yes.
Member Bowie?
Yes.
Member Klavenstein?
Yes.
Member Kim Wynn?
Yes.
Mayor Jones?
Yes.
Motion received, seven yes votes.
All right, any matters from agency members? Seeing none, we will adjourn to the sanitary district.
Okay, I'd like to ask the clerk to call a roll, please.
Member Bowie?
Yeah.
Member Jones?
Here.
Member Klavenstein?
Here.
Member Kim Wynn?
Yes, I'm here.
Member Tu Ha Wynn?
Here.
Vice President O'Neill?
Here.
And President Beard?
Here. We've already covered oral communications, consent items 2 being the quick claim deed, and to receive and file the minutes.
Move it. Move them.
Motion in a second, call for the vote.
Hold on, I was motion in the second, I think.
Oh. Motion, do I hear a second?
I'll second it.
Now I hear a motion in a second. Call for the vote, please.
Member Beard?
Yes.
Member O'Neill?
Yes.
Member Tu Ha Wynn?
Yes.
Member Bowie?
Yes.
And Vice, Vice President O'Neill, did anybody call?
You call, ma'am.
Member Klavenstein?
Yes.
And Member Kim Wynn? And Mayor Jones?
Yes.
Motion received, seven yes votes.
Item number three, items for consideration, and that would be the Republic Waste Services, which is a joint.
Yeah, this is a joint item with city council, so can we also reconvene city council? I don't know if we have to do anything, just, we're going to reconvene city council, and we're going to act on this simultaneously. Does it have to be two separate motions, or can we act on it?
Well, I would prefer to separate motions, so that the record is pretty clear on the two votes.
Please.
Will you?
Okay.
Joint decision.
Yeah, okay, so this is 3A, approval of an amendment to agreement with Republic Waste Services of Southern California LLC, DBA, Garden Grove Disposal, for a mandatory organic waste program and rate implementation. This is a joint action. On behalf of city council, I'd like to move it.
I'll second.
Call to vote for city council item.
Councilmember Beard?
Yes.
Councilmember John O'Neill?
Yes.
Councilmember Tu Ha Wynn?
Yes.
Councilmember Bowie?
Yes.
Councilmember Klavenstein?
Yes.
Councilmember Wynn?
Yes.
Mayor Jones?
Yes.
Seven yes votes. Motion received.
Back to you.
Okay, back to sanitary district, call a, entertain, same item, 3A.
I'll move it.
I'll second it.
Motion in a second, call for the vote.
Member Bowie?
Yes.
Member Jones?
Yes.
Member Klavenstein?
Yes.
Member Kim Wynn?
Yes.
Member Tu Ha Wynn?
Yes.
Vice President O'Neill?
Yes.
And President Beard?
Yes. So, item, any matters from the president, board members, or general manager? Seeing none?
There is a, there is one agenda, a response to a resident.
Item four, excuse me, matters from, discussion regarding private sewer laterals inquiries.
Yeah, I asked that that be put on there regarding public comment and other communications that I've had previously in the past few months with residents. I just thought we should get it out in the open and talk about it. In the city here in Garden Grove, if your sewer, you were to have a catastrophic failure in the street, you're responsible to the middle of the street. In my opinion, I don't think we should put that burden on the residents to pick up the cost of hiring an A contractor to dig up the street and repair the sewer. I would prefer to give them a, a complete sewer line to the back of the curb, just like we are provided our water meter in our property, we're provided our gas line to our property, we're provided our telephone, our cable, everything is a D-marked location at the property, in your property. I just wanted to get it out there and have discussion about, you know, I'm not, I don't want to incur any extra cost for the city, but I think if there was a small fund, we do have a sewer payment that we pay to the county through our property tax, we pay a sewer payment for our sewer lines within the city in our water bill. Perhaps there's a portion of that sewer fee in our water bill that could be allocated towards future sewer replacement. This isn't just to, to replace a sewer just because you want to, this is if there's a catastrophic, catastrophic failure in the middle of the street. I don't believe that the residents in our community have the ability, most of them, to pay for something like that. It's, it's, could be anywhere from $10,000 to $20,000 to, to replace that sewer line in that short segment. So I wanted to open up discussion, see how everybody feels about it. If we can come to some sort of agreement to go back to staff to maybe look at other cities that are doing this, like I know Santa Ana and some others have, have plans, or some cities that provide it with no costs, or some cities that have a, a, a charge that they charge for that. That way, it's kind of a built-in insurance policy, so if your sewer line was ever to fail in the street, we know that would be repaired in a timely manner. Because when that happens, you don't have time to think about it. You've got to sign the dotted line to a contractor and get your sewer repaired pretty quickly, or you're going to be in a big mess. So, just, I kind of brought it up, so I just, that was my explanation. And we can have a presentation maybe from the city, or maybe another discussion from city council.
Just to kind of piggyback on, on what you're bringing up, Councilmember O'Neill, I too have had people in my district bring this issue up, and so I, for one, would like to hear from, if we could, from Public Works Director Bill Murray, and just see where we're at with this and what the possibilities are and what maybe we could do.
Okay. So, thank you, President Beard, and members of the board. I'm here with Sam Keer, Sam Kim, our water manager, and Brent Hayes, our sewer, basically sanitation supervisor, directs all the field crews out there. Recently, a resident did express some concern regarding the privately-owned sewer laterals within our district. Specifically, the resident is concerned that the city will not repair the sewer laterals from the curb face to the sewer main. The resident stated that this used to be done, presumably back before the city took over the district. The resident would like to see the city rewrite the district code to accept ownership from the curb to the main line, or establish a replacement fund to replace such lateral breaks. Staff has reviewed the resident's statement and offers the following comments. The city took over the sanitary sewers in 1997 and began the process of assessing the district's infrastructure, preparing master plans, financial plans, and district codes and regulations to regulate the sewer lines within the city. It should be noted that GGSD's codes and requirements remain the same ever since we took over the district. Your staff report actually contains that exact verbiage as to what's in the code, but basically it says that the laterals are, are the responsibility of the homeowners. The, I would like to point out that this is a, basically an industry standard, that out of all the cities around us, only Santa Ana has taken over this additional responsibility, and in doing so, they did encounter some problems that we could go into and talk about, but it, it's clearly a majority of the cities within the county require the residents to maintain their, their personal sewer laterals. The GGSD does not specifically replace sewer laterals in our master plan or capacity-assurance plan, nor are they a part of the sewer rates that were adopted under Prop 218 process. So we don't have any established fiscal, or, you know, money set aside for sewer laterals, is what I'm trying to say. In 2006, the city was sued, and the provisions of the lawsuit did establish a loan program to assist the property owners with lateral repairs, and that's about $45,000. I can also add that the interest rate on that has not been updated recently, and is probably something that we should look at. Additionally, Brent's crews repair about 10 laterals a year, and those have usually been damaged by city trees, and that is something that, that we do go ahead and do the work for, is any damage that's done by a city tree, or any type of work done out in the street that's permitted work, so it's either a utility line, or some works that, that we're doing, if we're installing a water line or sewer line, and we damaged the, the private lateral, we'll go ahead and pick that cost up. And we get about 10 of those a year, mostly due to city trees. Let's see, and finally, I'd like to put out that, you know, I think that, you know, the industry standard, and what I was taught in college, is that petrified clay pipe, which is the predominant pipe used for sewer laterals, lasts about 50 to 60 years. But, you know, there've been a lot of recent studies done, and they're really finding out that the lifespan could be a lot longer. We have existing clay pipes that are in service and in main lines that are, you know, We have existing clay pipes that are in service and in mainlines that are, you know, 100 years old, some of them as long as 200. I don't know that we'll get that, but it's more of a condition of how well they were put in to begin with, and if there was any real soil disturbance that would cause the pipe to fall apart. In my personal experience, your sewer line will last very, very long, as long as you keep tree roots away from it. So, that's really the biggest issue that I see with them. And that'll conclude my report, and if you have any questions, we're available.
Thank you.
Any further questions? I just have a few, just a comment. I think I like the loan aspect of it, the program, I think we could look at that, I mean, for hardships and this and that. I definitely think any problem, anything caused by the city and damage or repairs should be our responsibility, so I think we're headed along the right course, but maybe look at the loan program, make it available for qualified residents perhaps. Is that doable?
Do you know the specifics on the loan program? If someone came to us and said, hey, you know, I can't afford it, but I need to get my sewer replaced, what is the current term and rate?
I'm going to refer that to Sam, do you have, remember that off the top of your head?
It details out anywhere from 15 to 20-year loan term, but I don't remember the interest rate on it.
Okay. Thank you.
And Mr. Mayor, maybe to Mayor Pro Tem Beard, we'd be happy to come back with some additional information to the council that would outline a little bit of the provisions and terms of how the loan program works, whether there should be any changes to the interest rate, or how it can keep up with Consumer Price Index, or whatever we do to so we make sure it's current, so we'd be happy to come back with some additional information to the council.
I too, go ahead.
Can you also add on the qualifications for the loan program as well? What's the criteria requirement to be qualified for the loan?
Certainly.
Who's next? Go ahead.
I too have heard so many first question from neighbors, and I myself was once had my lateral broken by the city contractor. And it is not a simple matter. We're talking about, if it is a small script, it could cost about $10,000, $15,000 to fix, because it's required a Class A contractors. If it is a bigger script, let's just say trash, it would cost about $25,000. If it is a bigger script like brookhost, it may cost $30,000. A resident would be very tough for a resident to fix it. Now, but put that in perspective, what does constitute residential responsibility, and what does it constitute city responsibility? Like Bill, Mr. Murray had mentioned, if it's a city who caused the lateral to be damaged, the city, public work will pick it up and fix it. But let's just say one day, a big truck ride along the street and caused the lateral to be damaged, then it become very complicated, because the city will argue that, hey, it wasn't caused by the city, it was caused by traffic that caused it to collapse. And the residents say, well, but it wasn't caused by us either. So, I think it is something that definitely need staff to look closely into, and get some guidelines, some rules that are fair for, both for the city as well as for the residents. And ultimately, someone will have to pay for it. If it is a service that the city, that the resident obtained, and the city provide the services, the city will make the resident pay for it, one way or the other. So, if we look at that, I would like to have staff coming back and look at that from a longer term. If, instead of having one particular resident having to pay for it when it happened, just like they pay for any other services that the city provide, can we distribute it out, so that overall, it will be a less impact to a particular resident? And that is, I do not know, but I would hope staff would take a look at that and come back with a report and recommendation.
Member Jones?
Two things, I'll just clarify, this is, we're still under sanitary district, so if this comes back, it would come back under sanitary, not council. But I, my gut reaction is I can't help but sort of empathize with John O'Neil's sentiment on this, and also, you stole my example, the big truck thing, I was going to say that, right? Is, I mean, if it's not a tree root or something causing this, then what is it? It's likely some heavy vehicle on a public street doing it, no fault of the resident, nothing on their own property, nothing they did on their own property, so why should the resident have to bear the cost of some, you know, something out in the public right of way? So, that's my gut reaction. And at the end of the day, it sounds like there's maybe up to 10 of these a year, so we should maybe look at, just sort of factoring that in, budgeting for it, spreading the cost around across the whole city, as opposed to just the poor guy who just happened to be in front of where that truck drove, and happened to be that property. So, that's my gut feel, but I don't know how we do this.
Well, that's what I was thinking too, Mr. Mayor.
Mayor, if I may add, under Proposition 218, we cannot spread the cost.
Yeah.
We, under Proposition 218, the city has to collect commensurate to the services provided to that particular parcel. So, you know, in the voters', you know, the voters' interest in limiting the ability of local government to raise funds for public programs, they have hamstrung us, and we can no longer, you know, provide subsidies and take money from one area and provide it and subsidize a different area. So, for these types of services, whether it be water, sewer, solid waste, we have to charge each parcel, each property owner, the cost commensurate to the services provided to that particular parcel.
Which is, to John's point, is, then why should a property owner have to pay for something that's outside of his parcel?
But it's not outside. The difference between sewer, and water, and gas, and electric, is that there's a meter, and the meter is a demarcation point for, you know, when it goes into the house. You could have a lateral that goes all the way underneath the foundation. The latter is just the connection between all of the inside sewer lines onto the main sewer line. It could be anywhere on the property. We have no meters for lateral sewers. So, it would be very difficult on each parcel to determine where does it begin? Now, I understand that, you know, the demarcation could be the public right of way, or the public portion of the right of way.
The property line.
Most properties in California, they own to the center line of the street, and the city has an easement over a portion of that that can move. When we have, when we have street widens, then that demarcation will change. When we have vacation of streets and realignment of streets, then that demarcation is going to change. I'm not aware of any instance where a truck or vehicles made a sewer line collapse. That would be a problem that even we would have, with our sewers being in the center line of the streets and crossing streets through manholes. So, you know, this is why, and the fact, this is why most, I don't know of many agencies other than the city of Santa Ana, and other agencies where the property owners decided, yes, we're going to pay for it, and it's like social security, you're basically, you basically have to pay to put it in a pot, in the instance that your line breaks, then the money, the city has the money to fix your property's sewer line. But, you know, that's basically having the government collect the money in order to fix your property connection down the line. Or, you can have the government not deal with that, and you put money aside as part of the own property maintenance on your property, and when the collapse does happen, you have the money set aside to actually do the work. So, that's why these sewer lines, you know, forever have been treated that way.
What I was thinking tonight was just to go, give direction to staff, come back with maybe three things. One is the loan plan that we currently have, the term and the rate. Next would be, you know, what are the other cities doing? I have, I believe to be true, there's more than Santa Ana has, either provides the sewer line, or will pick up that cost to the curb, and they've got some sort of way that they pay for it, and then disperse it over the whole city, so like the mayor said, you know, that one unfortunate person is going to have to pick up the burden, but if we can spread it around and replace those when they break. You know, Garden Grove, what my concern is, you know, we'll all be gone at some point, but we've got a city that's 60 years old, and our sewers are getting older, and hopefully they do last 100 years, 150 years. But I, just in case they don't, most of our residents I know cannot pick up $15,000 or $20,000 in a 12 or 24-hour period, they have to sign a contract with somebody and say that they're going to get a loan and pay for it. So, anyway, I don't want to drag this on, but if you can come back with other cities in the area that either offer to pick it up, or if they have a plan in place to disperse the cost?
May I comment on that?
Sure.
You know, actually, in our staff report, we did kind of point that out. We did canvas our north, basically North County cities, and we looked at 33 jurisdictions, and there are five that pick up the costs.
So, how do they do it? Without a burden, I'm not here to want to try to burden the city down with paying more, you know, more burden to the city. You know, we're in a deficit situation, we're looking for money to spend on repaving roads and street signs and things like that, but how do those cities do that?
Staff, I think the city council have already made the, we want to staff to go back, do a study, and report to us in more detail. We want to find out what can be done, what options do we have? Right? So, we are not making any decision today, but we are directing staff to go back, research some more, and let us know.
Mr. Mayor, and to Councilman Bowie, yeah, there's, in addition to the two things that were mentioned, the interest rates, the loan program details about that, we can look at how some of the other cities have run their program, and that's small number of cities. Councilmember Wynn mentioned include some of the qualifications that go into the loan program, and include that, we'll include all of that data together. One of the other things that we're, that we're, you know, we have to think about too, is how this, you know, if we were to do something like this, how that might affect the long-term pressure on the, you know, to increase rates to maintain the system too, if we're doing that. So, for example, you know, we have a lot of properties here in Garden Grove that were built in the 40s and 50s, and if we took on the obligation of replacing all of that, you're probably asking people whose homes were built in the 60s and 70s and the 80s to help pay for that. How would you do that? So, you know, when you're talking, you know, the last thing any of us want to do is increase rates on any of this stuff. So, but we certainly recognize it's a big obligation when it does happen to you, and you know, it's a, it's a big burden on somebody. You know, we're going to look at the loan program, not a lot of people have taken advantage of it, maybe some of it's because some of the prevailing interest rates are, you know, haven't kept up with the economy, and just so it doesn't make it worthwhile for people to take advantage of it. But we'll include that information in our report as well.
Could you add one more thing in there?
Yes.
Just in the private sector, any insurance policies that are offered for sewer replacement? That's an option too. Can we just, we need the information to see the numbers and put it all together?
Yeah.
That's all we want.
Certainly.
Is that good enough direction, or do we need any kind of a motion to bring it back?
No, I think, I think we have the direction we need, and anything else you'd like to add?
I would just like to point out that I would like to hear more on that loan program and how that would function, but I also like to point out, and thank Bill and staff, that information already requested by council is actually on page 23 of 24 of the sanitary district packet. But I will say that it was a little hard to find, because it wasn't separated out the way that our council packets are separated by item. So, if, perhaps in the future, for the other agency, that we ensure that we tab the different items, so that council members can find the material a lot faster. But the information about surrounding cities is included in the packet, so carefully flip through it. And also, on that note about asking for tabs, if, when there's maps or pictures, if we can try to use color and/or use highlighter and highlight, because there's highlights in the, in other items, which you can't tell that they're highlighted.
Okay. You have your direction? Any other matters from members, general manager? Seeing none, back to council.
Congratulations, President Beard, on the world's longest sanitary district. We will reconvene city council, and move on to consent items. Recommended that 4A through 4I are acted on simultaneously, is there any? What's that? 4B through 4I, we've already taken 4A, so is there anybody who would like to pull anything?
4D.
Okay, cool. I actually need to pull 4D as well, so, okay, so do we have a motion for the balance?
Second.
Call to vote.
Councilmember Beard?
Yes.
Councilmember O'Neil?
Yes.
Councilmember Tuha Wynn?
Yes.
Councilmember Bowie?
Yes.
Councilmember Clovenstein?
Yes.
Councilmember Kim Wynn?
Yes.
Mayor Jones?
Yes.
Motion received, seven yes votes.
Okay, 4D, Kim pulled it, but also I need to recuse myself, because I have a business relationship with the applicant involved in this, so I'm going to leave the room and let Mayor Pro Tem Beard take over the item.
Okay, let's go on to 4D, if we could, please.
So, this is an approval of a density bonus housing agreement with Faircrest Real Estate LLC for a 10-unit apartment project located at 984111th Street in Garden Grove.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and members of city council. The item we have before you is an approval of a density bonus housing agreement with Faircrest Real Estate for a 10-unit apartment project located at 984111th Street. On January 1st, 2005, in an effort to promote affordable housing, the state's density bonus laws went into effect. The density bonus law promotes development of affordable housing through increased density, concessions, and incentives. On November 2nd, 2017, the planning commission adopted Resolution Number 5903-17, approving site plan number SP 038 2017, to construct 10 units on the property located at 984111th Street in Garden Grove. The site plan and the conditions of approval provide a density bonus to the project in exchange for the developer's agreement to restrict three of the 10 units for rental to an occupancy by lower-income households at an affordable rent. State density bonus affordable law, the site plan, and the resolution provide for three concessions and incentives for this project. The concessions for the project are, number one, a concession to allow the three-story configuration to be greater than 50% of the building footprint; two, a waiver of the requirement to separate the building from the drive aisle by a distance of 10 feet minimum; and number three, a concession to deviate from the required third-story side yard setback. State law requires the requested incentives or concessions be granted unless the city makes a written finding with substantial supporting evidence of any of the following. The incentives or concessions does not provide cost reductions necessary for providing affordable housing. The incentive or concession has an adverse impact on the public health, safety, the physical environment, or any property listed on the California Register of Historic Resources, and for which there is no means of mitigating said impact without making the project unaffordable, or the incentive or concession goes against state or federal law. In this case, no such findings were made. In exchange for the aforementioned increased density and concessions, the conditions of approval require the developer to enter into this density bonus housing agreement. This agreement details how the affordable housing provisions of this project will be implemented. Tonight, it's recommended that the city council approve the attached density bonus housing agreement between the city and Garden Grove Faircrest Real Estate LLC, and authorize the city manager to execute the agreement and all other documents necessary to implement the agreement. And this concludes my presentation, and I'm available to answer any questions that you may have.
Thank you. Any questions?
Cheers.
Councilmember Wynn?
Thank you. So, I didn't necessarily pull the item, because I'm not in favor of it, I just had a few clarifying questions. So, first question, is this a three-story or two-story? Because on page 26 of the agreement, I think it said two-story, but I think the report says three. And then, my second question is more of a density bonus housing agreement question. I wanted to know, when someone no longer qualifies for the program, must they move out? And then it says that next available unit becomes a low-income unit, but what if one does not become available quickly? does not become available quickly? So, I guess my question is, is it always three units designated, but if that happens, how do we ensure that there's always three units available?
The agreement requires that three units be available, and the units are what we would consider floating, so it's not any specific designated unit, it's any three in the project. So, if a household occupying one of the identified affordable units becomes over income, they can stay in place until the next unit becomes available, and then that unit will be rented to a lower-income family that qualifies.
Is there a number of date? For instance, like, what if no one moves out? People like living there and they stay there for years on end, and there's only ever like two designated, floating units designated for low income, or one, or zero at one point? How do we ensure that there continues to be three units? But then, also, my question about the two or three-story.
Yeah, the agreement, or standard agreement, does not have any specific time within which they have to comply. The income verification is annual, and so they'll know within, you know, months of that year whether the particular family continues to qualify as lower income or not. But we do not put a restriction as to when the next available unit will become lower income, because that would put pressure on the existing family to be vacated, or some other family to be vacated as well. So, we don't have that, but the fact that we do review these annually, we can stay on top of them and make sure that the next vacancy will be led to a lower-income family.
Historically, when we have these projects and we have this agreement in place, are we typically consistently having the units that we ask them to stay have? For instance, if we said three out of ten need to be low-income, typically do they stay that three are always low-income? I'm just concerned about the fact that we're doing an agreement, and then suppose someone doesn't qualify, and no one moves out, and then we have only two, one, or none for a long period of time.
Well, annually, the rent and income limits come out, and those tend to trend up annually, so generally speaking, as the rent and income limits trend up, it kind of matches the income of the tenants, so we've not experienced that being a problem.
Two or three?
Three.
Okay, any further questions?
I'd like to motion?
Second.
Motion is second. Call for the vote.
Councilmember Beard?
Yes.
Councilmember John O'Neil?
Yes.
Councilmember Tuhal Nguyen?
Yes.
Councilmember Bowie?
Yes.
Councilmember Cloppenstein?
Yes.
Councilmember Kim Nguyen?
Yes.
And Mayor Jones has recused himself. So, motion received, six yes votes.
Thank you.
Alrighty, that concludes consent items, and we will move on to public hearings. We have two, so item five A.
Tonight, we have a consideration of an appeal of a planning commission action for denial of site plan number SP zero four six dash two zero one eight, lot line adjustment number LLA dash zero one three dash two zero one eight, and variance number V dash zero one eight dash twenty eighteen for the development of a four-unit apartment complex at one-two-six-seven-one ninth Street in Garden Grove. And Mr. Chung is here to provide the report.
Thank you. Good evening, Mr. Mayor and members of the City Council. The site is located on the west side of ninth Street, just north of Stanford Avenue, on the northeast, and northeast of City Hall, the Police Department, and Garden Grove High School. The site is zoned CCSP dash PR sixty-one, which stands for Community Center Specific Plan, Peripheral Residential Area sixty-one. The site is located in an area of similarly zoned properties, as shown in the exhibit before you, displayed as the pink-colored properties near the site. Areas sixteen sixty-one of the peripheral residential zones allow multiple-family residential developments with densities up to thirty-six units per acre. When the Community Center Specific Plan was adopted by the city in nineteen eighty-five, the intent was partly to achieve improvements of residential buildings within the CCSP zones through redevelopment and consolidation of existing lots. Furthermore, just south of the peripheral residential zones are the CC one and CC three mixed-use zone, civic center zones, which also foster multiple-family residential developments with densities of up to forty-two units per acre. The site has currently improved to three one-story detached apartment units. The applicant is proposing to demolish all existing improvements and construct four new three-story apartment units. The site is comprised of two separate lots under a single assessor's parcel number. Combined, the properties have a current lot size of thirteen thousand five hundred and sixty-four square feet. In order for the proposed project to move forward, a lot line adjustment is required to consolidate the two lots into one. Based on the city's master plan of streets and highways, ninth Street is considered a secondary arterial street, which has an ultimate right-of-way of forty feet to the center of the street. Currently, the measurement from the center of ninth Street to the site is thirty feet. As part of this project, a ten-foot public right-of-way dedication along the frontage, shown as the red shaded area, will be required. Therefore, after the lot line adjustment and the ten-foot right-of-way dedication, the resulting lot size of the consolidated property will be twelve thousand five hundred and sixty-four square feet. A new thirty-foot-wide driveway approach will be constructed providing access off ninth Street. Each side, north and south of the property, will be improved to two units attached by a carport in the middle. Both carports provide a total of six guest parking stalls. Additionally, each unit will be provided with a two-car enclosed garage. Each unit will be a three-story dwelling, providing a total living area of one thousand nine hundred and thirty-eight square feet with four bedrooms and four bathrooms. Each unit will provide a private patio on the first floor and a private balcony on the second floor. The project meets all municipal code requirements, which include, but is not limited to, setbacks, maximum lot coverage, landscaping, recreation space, and parking. The applicant has proposed a contemporary architectural style for the apartment dwelling units that exhibit stucco exteriors, decorative siding, glass balconies, varying window sizes, decorative light fixtures, a hip roof design, and an effective use of articulation on the building. The property is within the CCSP zone, which encourages lot consolidation and establishes a twenty thousand square foot minimum lot size requirement for the site. After consolidating the two properties into one, the resulting lot size will be twelve thousand five hundred and sixty-four square feet, which is less than the minimum required of the zone. The municipal code generally allows property owners to develop or redevelop lots that are legal nonconforming grandfathered, only as to lot area without variance. However, because the subject property is located within a specific plan area, a variance from the minimum lot area standard is necessary for the project to move forward. Accordingly, the applicant is requesting variance approval to deviate from the minimum lot size requirement of the zone in order to facilitate the development of the site. Staff reviewed the request and was supportive of the project, including the variance, in its recommendation to the minute, I'm sorry, to the Planning Commission. On March first, the Planning Commission held a public hearing to consider the project. Seven members of the public came forth to speak in opposition to the project. Those in opposition cited concerns in regard to insufficient onsite and offsite parking, existing traffic safety issues on ninth Street that will be exacerbated, concerns for the current tenants in the apartments to be demolished, adverse impacts on privacy of adjacent properties, loss of views and sunlight by adjacent properties due to the construction debris, construction noise, and quality of life. In addition to the applicant, one member of the public came forth to speak in favor of the project, stating the project would improve the blotted area and that the project, which includes obscured windows and inward-facing balconies, addresses privacy concerns. Staff advised the Planning Commission that the applicant was entitled to written findings if its request was denied. Several planning commissioners expressed concerns regarding the proposed project at the March first, two thousand and eighteen, public hearing, and the commission articulated reasons for denial on the record. Several commissioners expressed concern that the lot was not large enough to accommodate the proposed multifamily development, and that the size and massing of the proposed buildings is significantly different from that of the neighboring uses. For these reasons, the commission indicated it was unable to find that the proposed project is compatible with the physical, functional, and visual quality of the neighboring uses and desirable neighborhood characteristics, which relates to finding number five for site plan approval. Planning commissioners also expressed concerns that the additional traffic generated by the project would unnecessarily exacerbate the existing traffic and parking problems on adjacent streets. And the commission also indicated it was unable to find that the project will not adversely affect essential public facilities such as streets, and alleys, utilities, and drainage channels, relating to finding number three for site plan approval. After discussion among the planning commissioners, a motion was made articulating the reasons justifying denial of the applicant's request and directed, directing staff to prepare a resolution of denial based on the reasons articulated for adoption by the Planning Commission at its March fifteenth, two thousand meeting, two thousand and eighteen meeting. The motion was adopted by a vote of five to zero. On March eighth, two thousand and eighteen, the applicant filed an appeal of the March first, two thousand and eighteen, Planning Commission decision with the city clerk, unilaterally choosing to proceed to the City Council without the Planning Commission having formally adopted written findings for denial. Pursuant to chapter nine point three-two of the municipal code, any decision of the Planning Commission may be appealed to the City Council. Applicants are legally entitled to written findings justifying denial of a land use application by the Planning Commission, and typically wait until the Planning Commission has formally adopted written findings before filing an appeal. In this instance, however, the applicant has chosen to proceed with an appeal of the Planning Commission's decision to direct staff to prepare a resolution of denial for the Planning Commission's adoption, based on the findings orally articulated on the record, without waiting for the Planning Commission to formally adopt the resolution containing those findings. Although this is atypical, because the Planning Commission's action was intended to be final, and all that remained was the formal approval of a resolution denying the project, staff has determined that the municipal code permits the appeal. The City Council is expected to consider the appeal, conduct a public hearing, and make its own findings justifying approval or denial of the project. Following conclusion of the public hearing, the City Council may take final and conclusive action on the project by adopting a resolution either approving, conditionally approving, or denying the application. Alternatively, the City Council may refer proposed findings to the Planning Commission and request a further, further report on the matter before taking final action. Therefore, it's recommended that the City Council conduct a public hearing and either adopt the attached resolution granting the appeal and approving site plan number SP dash zero four six dash twenty eighteen, lot line adjustment number LLA dash zero one three dash twenty eighteen, and variance number V dash zero one eight dash twenty eighteen, subject to the attached conditions of approval, or adopt the attached resolution denying the appeal and denying the subject aforementioned entitlements, or provide further direction to staff. This concludes staff's report, and we are available for any questions you may have. Thank you.
Thank you, Chris. Any questions of staff before we open the public hearing?
Yeah, I have a question. You know, technically, you're saying we can go ahead and consider it, but I'd like to talk a little bit about maybe perhaps sending it back to the Planning Commission, getting written findings and such, just to be technical about it. I'll tell you why. I mean, the next applicant that comes in could say, the minute he files something with the Planning Commission, has an appeal going there. I mean, I hate to be bureaucratic about that, but I'm gonna be bureaucratic about that and say, maybe we should just follow it, send it back to the Planning Commission. Does that create problems, or noticing requirements, or hardship on anybody concerned with this project?
If I can respond, normally that would happen had the commission not made findings on the record. Because the commission made findings on the record, we really gain nothing by sending it back, because those findings are already, in fact, the resolution for denial contains those very same findings. So, you're basically, we would be asking the Planning Commission to adopt that resolution that you already have the authority under our municipal code to adopt. So, it just creates a delay for the applicant to move forward with the project if the council were to approve it. Otherwise, you know, he's just going back to the commission for, you know, basically a formality that can then be appealed, and you'll have it again. So, we will be having the same discussion in a subsequent, most likely, one month later, because we do need to provide notice of public hearing both to the surrounding properties and also on the newspaper.
Okay, well, just a thought.
Any other question?
I have a question. Correct me if I'm wrong, the surrounding properties immediately adjacent on all three sides, are those all single-family, one-story residential residences?
Directly to the north is a fairly new single-family home, if I can go to that, yeah. So, throughout the area, along College, ninth, and eighth, it's a mixture of single-family and multifamily developments. To the north on, of north of that large property, to the north of College and ninth, that's a three-story multifamily development, and just west of that, between seventh and eighth, is also a three-story development, but it's a mixture.
But specifically, both next door, on both sides, and behind are our single-family homes right now?
Correct.
Thank you.
Any other questions, or can we open the public hearing?
I'd like to do that first.
Yeah. I don't have any cards on this item. Is there anyone wishing to speak on this item? Okay. We will, we will close the public hearing.
Go ahead.
My, my take is the Planning Commission looked at this one a little sideways. I think, I don't know where, I don't know where they went wrong with the Planning Commission, but from what I can see, I mean, there's a total hodgepodge of uses throughout this whole neighborhood, apartments, townhomes, condos, for rent, for sale, single-family homes, that kind of thing. So, there's nothing particularly atrocious about this project, and the only variance, which was the minimum lot size, was stated on record by our planning manager that if you denied it for that variance, then you would also deny their ability to even build one single home on it, I believe. So, I don't, I don't see any reason to, to not allow this project to go through basically by right.
I'll comment. So, I mean, I get it, twelve thousand square foot lot, four units, it always looks good on paper. I'm concerned about the neighbors. You know, it looks good on paper. Three stories, I'm a little concerned about three, three levels, only because the other area hasn't been developed, but maybe in the future, those people could develop that too, but...
Yeah.
For the, for the sake of obviously being consider of the residents in and around the development area, could we maybe get a little more information on what is being done to protect the privacy of the people living around the project, and maybe also talk a little more about parking?
Sure, yes. The, we, during the review stages, we always look at, that's one of the most important aspects of any project, is the privacy, so we look at making sure that they're not intruding on neighboring properties into their rear recreation areas. So, this project specifically, directly, you know, sits kind of in a U shape, you know, looking at all the neighboring properties. So, the windows that have any views, they, the designer purposely thought of that and designed the windows to be six feet to the bottom of the window sill, and then any windows that are for, you know, fire egress, they're facing the inward part of the project, including the balconies. And then, any other subsequent windows are, you know, obscured glass, so they've taken that into account. And then also, the parking question, it does require three point five spaces per unit, so that's fourteen required and minimum, and it does provide fourteen. So, the four two-car enclosed garages, and then the six open guest parking stalls.
Would you mind scrolling through for the public benefit, the, yeah, some of the photos, like, sorry, the existing, existing layout, so there's the single-family home, there's the lot, basically, the whole lot. If you could scroll through your elevation views of your new construction, just so we can get an idea what the site in front and rear views would look like, not, instead of the top view, do you have elevations? There we go.
Yes.
Do you have an elevation that shows, looking from ninth Street?
Angle?
Like a rendering?
I mean, I guess, I guess it would be the, I guess that would be the east elevation, I guess that's over...
Yeah.
That doesn't, okay, east.
Explain.
Oh. Yeah, I see it. But that's not both units, I mean...
Oh, correct, yes.
Why don't you explain that?
Yeah, so in the, well, it's, it's a bit difficult to see, because some of these units are, you know, mirrored, and then there are different orientations on the lot, but as you can see, kind of as an example, on the top right, the windows on the second floor and the third floor, there's a six feet to the bottom of the window sill.
Right.
Yeah, and any other windows that face any other residential or properties, they'd be either facing the street or the inward part of the project, or they'd have obscured glass.
Okay.
There's also, there's also a Immoro Ridge apartment very close by, right? Just like, you know, the, the, the second property after this property. How, how tall is that apartment? Is that two-story or three-story? I don't remember.
I'm sorry, where on the...
The Immoro Ridge apartment? Because I used to drive by this area a lot, and I remember there's a, a very big apartment complex there.
Yeah.
Yeah, just, just like a couple property...
To the south of the subject site?
Yeah, to the north, maybe to the north. It's on College Avenue.
Oh, I see, okay, yeah. College Avenue, there's two complexes there, in the north, north of College Avenue and to the west. Those are three-story apartment complexes.
So, it's not unusual for, for, you know, the property of three-story in this general area?
That is correct.
Ask the other individuals.
Uh, the aerial here? Okay.
Yeah.
I have concern with three levels in that property because of the neighbors, I mean, to, that's my personal opinion, uh, at the moment. The first development to go in there with that type of unit, we're always getting in trouble sometimes because, not, not legally, but I mean, sometimes we hodgepodge things together, and we're not looking far enough ahead to make sure that this is going to fit in that community. Um, that's just me.
However, I think, I think we are, uh, this general area, like, if I look at this on the map here, we have, uh, that lot, and then a couple property, and then you have that, uh, apartment complex to the north, apartment complex to the south side of it.
Very large McMansion type.
Very large area, and you have Acacia Road Center there. So it, this is a general area where I don't think this is like, uh, you know, entirely residential area that, that might be a concern for me as well.
There, there is plenty of three-story development up and down the street.
Okay.
And I know behind, I think back here, behind off of Eighth Street, right, there's some-
Yeah.
Yep.
Right.
There's plenty of it mixed in.
So many, so many, already more, too many tall building there, I mean, too many, uh, structure there.
Okay.
Well, I, I, I am ready to, uh, to vote on this.
Yeah, he's got a-
And I got to go to Sacramento on city business, and I, my, my flight leave at nine twenty.
Okay.
Oh, geez.
I won't keep you, I just want to make a comment. I want to, I want to be supportive of the Planning Commission's decision on this, and for that reason, the height and everything, um, the traffic concerns, uh, Garden Grove, it definitely needs development, there's no question about it, or improvement, so, but just to let you know, I'm, I'm voting, uh, I'm siding with the Planning Commission on this, and, and not, not in support of that particular development this time.
Thank you. Um, but to me, this is an incredibly blighted dirt lot with three incredibly blighted little units on it already, and this will be a huge improvement. I think just from a philosophical level, we need to encourage the development of new housing, we can't shy away from that. We've got, we've got an affordable housing crisis, we talk about it, and yet we let a tiny, tiny little bit of NIMBYism get in our heads and distract us from kind of keeping things on track in the city. This will improve the area, it's going to be great. There's a lot of things changing in there, cottage industries coming in, steel crafts coming in, there are changes taking place in this area, and I think new development of an incredibly blighted property is going to be a good thing. So I'd like to make a motion to approve it.
I'll second.
Call the vote.
Councilmember Beard?
No.
Councilmember O'Neal?
No.
Councilmember Nguyen?
Yes.
Councilmember Bowie?
Yes.
Councilmember Clumpenstein?
Yes.
Councilmember Nguyen?
Yes.
Mayor Jones?
Yes.
Motion received. Five yes votes, two no votes, with Councilmember Beard and O'Neal voting no.
Mayor and city council, uh, I, uh, got to catch a fly at nine twenty out of the John Wayne Airport for city business, if I may, maybe accuse.
Thank you, please.
Safe travel.
Safe travel.
How's your flight?
Before we move on, I just want to note that I, just a second ago, received a card from Vicki Hansen on that, but we had already closed the public hearing on that one, so I apologize, but, okay, we'll move on to five B.
Uh, Mayor Jones and city council, item five B is the repurposing of the steel structure.
Excuse me, staff, I'm going to go ahead and read the title on this ordinance.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Thank you, Erin.
Sure, Liz.
Tonight, for, and items under consideration, we do have an adoption of a resolution approving general plan amendment number GPA dash zero zero one dash two thousand eighteen, adoption of a mitigated negative declaration, and approval of a density bonus housing agreement for properties located at one zero zero eight zero Garden Grove Boulevard and nine eight six zero Larson Avenue, Garden Grove, and introduction and first reading of an ordinance approving planned unit development number PUD dash zero zero eight dash two thousand eighteen, entitled An Ordinance of the City Council of the City of Garden Grove Approving Planned Unit Development PUD dash zero zero eight dash two thousand eighteen by changing the zoning designation from GGMU one and O dash S to Planned Unit Development PUD dash zero zero eight dash two thousand eighteen. And Ms. Webb is here to present the report, thank you.
Thank you, Liz. Mayor Jones and city council, item five B is the repurposing of the steel structure originally built for the Galleria into an affordable senior housing project with commercial retail business along Garden Grove Boulevard. I'm not sure that all of you were around when this was originally approved in two thousand and five. It was an ambitious, groundbreaking, mixed-use concept that was spearheaded by the then-president of the Hoag Foundation, Sheldon Singer. The Hoag Foundation owns the project site and the Boys and Girls Club site to the You can see from the top photo that in two thousand and five, that was the defunct car dealership building. The zoning was C two, community commercial, and the general plan land use designation was heavy commercial. The sketch below is the Galleria, and it was mixed-use with residential on the top and two floors of double-height, uh, retail mall, well, shopping mall below. So it needed a general plan amendment to change the land use designation to mixed-use and a zone change to PUD, because mixed-use did not have any zoning that would implement The developers, Mr. Yun and Mr. Kim, hired a Korean architect to develop the eight-story mixed-use building. Construction began in two thousand and seven. A slab was installed, and grading continued through two thousand and eight. In two thousand and eight, the city looked at redoing the general plan, and Garden Grove Boulevard was a focus area for changes. The commercial designation that it used to be was changed into several mixed-use designations. That subject property with the turquoise X was included in the residential-commercial-mixed-use-one designation, so that allowed for projects with a residential density up to forty-two dwelling units per acre, mixed with commercial businesses of point five FAR. In two thousand and twelve, we followed up with mixed-use zones adopted for the site. That's the Garden Grove Mixed Use One, which is the highest density possible, once again, forty-two dwelling units per acre, and standards for tall urban mixed-use projects. Connected with the Brookhurst Triangle above, it was an important node for this higher-density The last building permit happened in two thousand and nine. That was rough plumbing, so the site was graded, foundations were built, and the steel structure was erected, and then construction seized. The developer sent a letter, March two thousand and ten, advising the city that work stopped due to the economic climate and funding problems. After that, the project and the property were tied up in litigation between the developer, the property owner, and the bank financing the development. Time moved on, but that steel structure still, still remained. In two thousand and sixteen, AMG and Associates brought a revised proposal for approximately four hundred affordable senior housing units to the city, and we have been working with them ever since. So how will you get four hundred units on that site was the question. Um, the previous mixed-use plan was sixty-six units up above the larger retail mall below. So the entitlements include a general plan amendment, planned unit development, mitigated NEGDEC, and of course, a site plan, because there were changes, as you could see, in the buildings. On March fifteenth, the Planning Commission approved site plan forty-eight, two thousand and eighteen, and as you've heard, it repurposed that steel structure into three hundred and ninety-four units of affordable senior housing and approximately thirteen thousand square feet of commercial retail space. The project also includes some changes to massing to figure out how to get those units around light wells, and an increase in developable site area to five point oh nine acres from the three point oh nine acres, and that helped, of course, in the density. The project also includes a thirty-five percent density bonus for affordable senior housing with three concessions. So before you today is to conduct this public hearing and look at the general plan amendment, look at the planned unit development, approve a subsequent mitigated NEGDEC and mitigation monitoring and reporting program, and approve a density bonus housing agreement. So the reason we wanted to change the site to community residential is that it exists in our general plan, and it allows the highest density possible, which is sixty dwelling units per acre. And it is expressly for senior housing, convalescent homes, et cetera. You can see in the map to the left that the site is divided between the residential-commercial-mixed-use-one general plan designation and a portion of the parks and open space. So that below is the Boys and Girls Club property, which includes Kiwanis Land. So once you combine the five point oh nine acres with the new general plan designation of community residential, you get more density, and then when you add the thirty-five percent state density bonus, you get up to around four hundred units. So the aerial shows the buildings on the site, the sort of defunct structure in the front in the GGMU one, that's the Garden Brook, now Senior Village, the old Galleria. Behind is that parking garage structure, that's just going to be three stories. The Boys and Girls Club sits behind in that parking lot, surrounded with the black, and part of that larger open space. So in order to have zoning for this property, once again, community residential does not have any zoning that's approved that would implement it, so then you fall back on planned unit development. And the planned unit development is going to need to highlight the unique uses on both of those properties. This is a little much to read, but, um, so the planned unit development is going to put in place for that front portion, that it can be senior housing, convalescent hospitals, all those things that are mentioned in the community residential plan, and those are translated into Title IX of the municipal code into multifamily community care facilities. We also will allow in that yellow section the C, uh, uses from the C one and the office professional, which will allow them to find tenants for the front thirteen thousand square feet of commercial. And then improvements along the front should match what we hope, excuse me, hope for in the Garden Grove Mixed Use One, so that's pedestrian plaza's architectural detailing. So that will also be part of the front part of the PUD. The back part, the APN ninety-eight oh seven oh seventy-three, the nine eight six oh Larson Avenue, is where the Boys and Girls Club exists, and so that will be, that portion will be used only for those types of uses, open space, such as public and semi-public education institutions. So the uses are going to stay the same, even though the PUD will be over the entire property. Back in two thousand and five, we did a mitigated NEGDEC and approved the Galleria project. A notice of determination was filed back then, in two thousand and five, and then in two thousand and seventeen, with the modifications that you're seeing in the plans, a subsequent initial study was prepared. And that subsequent initial study concluded that all the proposed projects' environmental impacts could be reduced to a less than significant level. So subsequent mitigated NEGDEC was prepared, and the public review happened prior to the Planning Commission. A mitigation monitoring and reporting program was drafted and incorporated. So we're excited about this new building covering the old steel skeleton.
Mm-hmm.
That was the rear view, and this is the front, and also the rear with some detailing on the architectural, um, materials. So the recommendation to the city council is to conduct a public hearing, to adopt the subsequent mitigated negative declaration, to adopt the attached resolution approving general plan amendment GPA one, two thousand and eighteen, to introduce and conduct the first reading of the attached ordinance approving planned unit development number PUD eight two thousand and eighteen, to read as follows. An ordinance of the city council of the City of Garden Grove approving planned unit development number PUD eight two thousand and eighteen by changing the zoning designation from GGMU one, Garden Grove Mixed Use One, and open space, OS, to planned unit development number PUD eight two thousand and eighteen, to approve the attached density bonus housing agreement between the city and AMG and Associates LLC, and authorize the city manager to execute the density bonus housing agreement and to approve modifications as necessary. That concludes my presentation, and I'm here for questions, and Allison Wilson is here, and we're all, we're here.
Thank you, Erin. Any questions of staff before we open the public hearing?
Congratulations. Give him some applause.
No? Okay, we'll go ahead and open the public hearing. I have one card from Tony Flores, is he still here? I think I saw him skip out a while ago. Um, okay, I don't have any other cards. Anyone else wishing to speak on this item?
Mr. Mayor, if I could just speak?
Please come forward.
My name is Randall Williams. Good evening, Mr. Mayor, Councilman. As a real estate professional, at least on the fringe, I've watched the City of Garden Grove for probably thirty-nine years, because this is where I live, and the steel menagerie is something that bothers me as much as you, I'm sure. But one thing I've seen this council do in the last several decades is continue to approve plans that increase the density on our projects. Garden Grove started out as a bedroom community, it was single-family homes, and as we've progressed through the years, we have taken that and set that aside. And the only reason I really want to talk this evening is to get you to consider, every time you add more folks to a single lot, even if it's a large lot, and you multiply density, you are running risks when it comes to our community services, our police force, our fire department, and unless your mitigation includes beefing up of those services, you're doing a disservice to the rest of the community. So with that, I thank you, and just, I want you to consider that as an issue before you approve. Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else wishing to speak? Okay, seeing none, we will close the public hearing. Uh, what's that? Oh.
I mean, how much do you think it's doing now?
Would, would you like to, would you like to come up and speak, sir? Well, we'll reopen the public, you have to come up to the microphone, though, sir, please.
I just buy whatever he says, everything. I'm saying this.
Thank you. Is there anyone else wishing to speak on this item? Okay, seeing none, we will close the public hearing. Um, council members, comments? I'll, I'll go ahead and go. I mean, so obviously, this, this structure, the rusty skeleton, has been the biggest eyesore in the city for the last ten or twelve years since the, since the downturn and since the Cathay Bank stopped funding loan draws on the original project that was halfway constructed to go in there, so it's been problematic. We've received a million complaints about, what are we going to do about it, and when's that going to get done, or torn down, or something, right? So, and, um, you know, we've had several near misses, and this, lots of, lots of litigation mired around the site from former contractors, mechanics, liens, those sort of things. So, um, I'm thrilled to see it moving forward. I thank Alexis and AMG for hanging in there and finding ways to be a good partner with the Hoag Foundation, with the Boys and Girls Club, with, um, the adjacent uses, and find ways to kind of collaborate on making something go forward. The, the structure, the massing, it's already there, so this just, we'll finish it out and, and put it to use. We need more affordable housing, we need senior housing, this fills a, um, a need that we genuinely have. So I'm, I'm supportive, I'm excited to see this project get completed, I think it's going to be great. Kudos for the city to finally see- Kudos for the city to finally see this thing moving forward into construction and ultimately getting completed, hopefully sometime next year. So with that, I'd like to make a motion to approve it.
Second.
Second. I'm sorry, who was the second? Thank you.
Call to vote.
Councilmember Beard?
Yes.
Councilmember O'Neill?
Yes.
Councilmember Tu Hawin?
Yes.
Councilmember Klumpenstein?
Yes.
Councilmember Kim Nguyen?
Yes.
Mayor Jones?
Yes.
Motion received, got six yes votes, with Councilmember Bowie absent.
Okay, this just keeps on keeping on. We have two items for consideration. So we'll move on to item 6A.
The council already took action on that item.
Do you want to keep powering through?
Yes.
Okay.
The council took action on 6A.
Oh, yeah, we sure did. Okay, we did that simultaneously with the Sand District, so we'll move on to 6B.
Okay, tonight for items for consideration, we do have an adoption of a resolution revising the fee for block party permits. And we have Ms. Pallio and Fire Chief Schultz providing the report.
Mayor and members of the city council. Mayor and members of the city council, staff would like to request for city council to adopt a resolution approving a revised fee for block party permits. The current cost to process a permit is $50. This fee has been in place for over 20 years. Due to block parties not complying with the terms of their issued city permit, starting in 2018, there will be one dedicated staff from both the police and fire departments assigned to inspect all block parties on 4th of July. Staff has analyzed and calculated the actual and direct cost to the city to monitor a block party permitted event. Since the existing permit fee does not include the cost for public safety, it is necessary to implement an additional fee of $86.50 to cover the increased cost, for a total revised fee of $136.50. Adoption of the resolution revising the fee for block party permits will have no financial impact to the city's general fund. Staff is recommending that the city council adopt the resolution to revise the fee for block party permits from the current fee of $50 to a revised fee of $136.50. The revised fee will become effective immediately upon adoption by the city council. This concludes staff report, and I am available to answer any questions you may have.
Thank you. Any questions?
Yeah, just a quick question. Will this then be posted on our social media and on our website and so forth, so this doesn't surprise anybody come 4th of July? Well, how did this increase? What happened? Just to make sure we're public's aware.
Yes, we will make sure to make a notice.
Great, thank you.
And since we're talking about it, can we confirm when the request for a block party would be, need to be in before 4th of July? Is it usually a month before, right?
It is a month before, so we usually go till, depending on the day of the week, that it lands, June 3rd, June 4th, June 5th, depending on that Monday.
They'd have to have their, because they have to get signatures and all that.
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Applications are complete by, 30 days before.
Question? How many, how many, how many permits do we have every, would this allow more permits, or?
We don't have a specific limitation. It's usually based on the number occurring per police district, so we do limit it by police district to three. We've made some exceptions over time, but then, you know, that's, there's a lot of police districts in the community, so we never exceed an amount that we would allow. It's usually about average of 20.
Oh, yeah. That's good, that's good celebration. So with that, there's a, this is more of a cost, we haven't raised the fees on block party permits for a very long time, correct?
1996, 22 years ago.
This recovers, helped recover our costs, it's all related to safety and everything.
Well, right, and so the fee that's in place, the $50, is for processing the permit, not for the public safety component.
Yeah, so the added expenses for public safety.
Correct.
Thank you.
One last question, sorry. The, so the, we've already been doing this service and haven't been recouping the cost, right? So we've already had a fire and police out there, right?
We do have public safety dedicated that day to monitor the streets, however, this staff is going to be specifically dedicated to inspect all the block parties. So we've never had anybody go from block party to bar, block party walking through and making sure that they're complying with all requirements.
Okay, all right, thank you. Any other questions, comments?
Yes.
Motion?
Move the recommendation.
Called to vote. Councilmember Beard?
Yes.
Councilmember O'Neill?
Yes.
Councilmember Tu Hawin?
Yes.
Councilmember Klumpenstein?
Yes.
Councilmember Kim Nguyen?
Yes.
Mayor Jones?
Yes.
Motion received, six yes votes, with Councilmember Bowie absent.
Thank you. We'll move on to matters. We do have two items listed. First, 7A is an update on the Novus Agenda voting system, and we could probably do the Cliff Notes version under the.
Anytime I talk, people want the Cliff Notes version. So, we, we did look into the issues that we have with the Novus Agenda voting system, and we decided the most prudent solution would be to bring the voting system in-house so that we didn't have to deal with any latency over the internet or with servers that we had no control over. Staff has already put something together, we've tested it out, and we believe that we will have it functional by your next council meeting. And that is my report.
Cool. Thank you. We look forward to, to seeing that.
All right, thank you.
Thanks for taking that. And that's just an update, right? So nothing to vote on, nothing. Thanks, Charles. Discussion on resolution designated a portion of Garden Grove west of Western Avenue as the West Grove District as brought forth by Mayor Proton Beard, so let me go ahead and dive in.
Let me say quite a few things. First of all, this, let me start by saying, this is a draft resolution. And I really appreciate, I asked for and I got it, criticism, feedback, opinions on, on the resolution itself. And I do truly appreciate that. It's vital, it's important. And with that, I, I don't intend to present the, the resolution as you see it now, the way it is. I think this is valuable input to revise the draft, and I'll give you my reasons for that. I appreciate some of the speakers sticking around who, who talked about it and, and thought it was what I didn't intend it to be. And let me tell you what I didn't intend it to be. Some of the speakers also commented on, and I, I've also posted this and, in the social media, I just want to repeat what I wrote, and that is, the primary objective of the resolution is to promote economic development in West Grove, not to inflame feelings about our end of town. Garden Grove is a great city, and West Grove is a part of that narrative. I want to be clear on that. It's a part of a great city. I'm proud and honored to serve West Grove, and by being too elaborate in expressing in the resolution, my, my pride in the resolution, it left, it created unintentional provoked, unintentionally provoked negative references and harsh opinions from people outside of West Garden Grove. Again, that was not the intent. I freely admit my pride in my community. It was not restrained with humility in writing the resolution, but I want to put more of a positive and take what people perceive as implied or inferences in the resolution what it was not intended to be. I think with changing the language and verbiage, we can really address the city of Garden Grove and what a great community it is, and Garden Grove, West Garden Grove being a part of that. It's a draft document that can be edited to replace controversial words that we heard. And I'll, I'll tell you something true, honestly. For my generation, All-American was not ever, ever considered to be any kind of a, of a negative. I always meant it as a positive. I looked it up in the dictionary, and this is how I felt, possessing, All-American was possessing qualities of American ideals, such as honesty, industriousness, and health, prosperity. So that was my connotation, and it had no other reference than that, and that was my meaning, and that was my intent. When some people had a different view or definition of that, it may be modern times, and I'm not up to date with how people use that term nowadays. But that was my, again, my intent, as a positive, not to be any kind of code word, as I heard in some, some people mentioning, I would never do such a thing as well. So with this draft resolution, again, I want to replace some controversial words that may be sensitive to some, but I want to emphasize West Grove is, West Grove is being unique while sharing and embodying the same great attributes of all districts in our city. So I think how I can do that, I don't intend to make these changes tonight, but I do want to comment on them. We had some speakers who, who talked about West Garden Grove being this way. Well, that's reflective of all of, all of Garden Grove, and I would include that in the resolution to say, we are a, we have the character of a small, family-oriented, hardworking, middle-class hometown as reflected or embodied by the entire city of Garden Grove. I like to say one of my whereas was, like all of Garden Grove, West Grove is proud of its community, as it continues to support and participates in such longstanding traditions, family traditions, I might add, instead of another word, and activities such as everything that was listed. We all do these things. We do this in Garden Grove, West Garden Grove, just like the rest of the city. We are no different, we are no better, but we are distinct and unique. I wanted to point that out. I wanted to add, whereas, like, as, as other distinguished citizens throughout the city of Garden Grove, past and present, West Garden Groves have made distinguished contributions in all of society and all the fields. So I think that's reflective of the city and with West Garden Grove as well. And finally, I go down to the last passage of it was, I want to emphasize that these other areas, Little Saigon, the Korean Business District, Garden Grove continues to proudly acknowledge Little Saigon, the Korean Business District, the Grove Resort District, Historic Main Street, and reimagine downtown Garden Grove area. And the West Grove, so, so too does the same. I want to reflect that as well. So with those prefaces, that's saying we are a great city, we are West Garden Grove, but let me get, again, get back to, the, the major intent was, West Garden Grove has a need for some restaurants, commercial activities, we have some vacancies, and this, I think, could be a catalyst to doing that. There's a consortium of cities nearby on Beach Boulevard that started with Anaheim, and they want to go all the way down beach as a rebranding and remarketing of that area. We can do the same thing in West Garden Grove. We want to attract those businesses willing to come into our area because citizens are really, really want those services, especially restaurants. Again, primarily, the resolution was not intended to be divisive, divisive, but to attract interest from outside, restaurants, capital investors, and other businesses to revitalize the Valley View Commercial Corridor. West Grove needs to complete, compete in the surrounding areas. That's Seal Beach, that's Cypress, those are our surrounding areas. We want to emphasize our industrial manufacturing area, which could also be promoted with business retention, business expansion. That's a vital commerce area of the city. So with that branding and marketing, we can, we can help to do that, achieve those goals of bringing in needed commercial businesses and restaurants. And similar to the efforts made in Little Saigon, the business, Korean Business Community, the Grove District, Main Street, and reimagine downtown Garden Grove, that was my emphasis for this resolution. Overall, I think improving the economics of West Garden Grove or other areas in other districts is a rising tide that lifts all the boats. All districts can benefit and improve. So I, I, I think you know me, council members, my colleagues, that this was not intended to be anything specific against the district. It, it's just to promote business opportunities for, down the road for West Garden Grove. So with that, I'd like to consider bringing this back at another time with modifications and revisions. If you'd like to discuss any details of, of the resolution, I'm open to suggestions. Again, this is a draft resolution.
Thank you, Mayor Proton. Questions, comments?
Well, I just want to make a quick comment. I, I know the Mayor Proton, Chris, they have a good intentions of, of having business attraction to the District One, West Side of Garden Grove. But in my opinion is, do we really necessary to name each district? I mean, West Grove for District One, then District Two, going to have a name, District Three. I mean, Little Saigon, it basically not just one district, it looks like on the compiling of three districts. And, and just like Korean District, Business District include District Three and District Two, and some go to District One. So it's a landmark of Garden Grove. But in this way, I mean, my opinion is, do we really come down with naming that whole district?
Well, it, I would say it's part of a strategy. First, we do the, the branding, we do the marketing, we can do signage, we can do that in particular. So it, it is rather isolated geographically, geographically, it's isolated. So, again, we're in competition with the surrounding area, be it Cypress, Seal Beach, I go, I see my neighbors down at Cypress eating and this and that. So it's, it's a part of a strategy to bring that in. So in, in that essence, it's part of a marketing campaign, so to speak.
Can we just name it Valley View Corridor, just that we have harbor corridors for the other side?
Well, it, it, you know, what, basically, we're formalizing something that's already there out there, in that end of town. We, we are West Grove. We talk about it, I mean, it's easy to identifiable, and it's not to be exclusive of other districts. Again, I mentioned all the positives, not to be anti-other districts, it's more promoting our area of town, as there are so many great districts in the city. But for locals, for regulars, for West Side people, that's the common, we don't say, oh, let's, this is the Valley View Corridor, this is, this is West Grove. So, and it also includes the industrial manufacturing area as well, we include that geographic area.
I have to just ask, obviously, there was some wording in a few parts of this resolution that, that obviously was of concern to me. I think when we think of All-American, I think of, obviously, all of Garden Grove as a whole. I also had a little bit of a concern about it beginning at Western. I'm concerned about another little pocket of District One, and I just want to make sure that they're not excluded and don't feel as though they're represented, and that they have a voice within District One and the community. I understand that they might not be near the Valley View Corridor, but I'm just curious as to the reasoning behind that and how we kind of fit that little pocket in with the overall message and picture.
Again, it encompasses more the industrial manufacturing area. We could have gone out a little further, but it gets, it jogs into Stanton and that, so that was a major street, I could pick up even Beach, but that, residents, some, some thought that we should just go to Knott. It's, it's not a specific, it, it's an area, so I had to, I wanted to identify a portion that was probably the best way of doing it, that's a major street. So that's the reason why we picked that one. It's, it does, it's, there's no residential beyond Knott, between Knott and, say, Western, it's all industrial manufacturing.
I just wanted to say that I know Mayor Proton Beard had all the good, right intentions, you know, sometimes you're, you know, your intention, you don't realize until you get all the comment back and all that, but I think you can go back and look at it and come back with something, and maybe, maybe there's something we can come up with. It may, you know, may be totally different, it may be very similar. I'm open to it. I know that whole area is starving for any kind of recognition in the commercial, industrial, restaurants, all that, it really is in need, so I'm all in favor of doing what we all can together, Garden, City of Garden Grove, to bolster that up, you know, so.
And in turn, I would be reflective of doing the same in your districts as well. Where there's a need, an area, I'm supportive of that in your districts as well. We're all Garden Grove, that's, we're all together on this, so. Again, a rising tide lifts all boats.
Go ahead.
I just wanted to add, so I know you very well, so I know that your heart was in the right place in wanting to do this and shine light to your district and provide something for them to come together and, and bond over, but intent versus impact is very different. The way that that resolution was written, I feel like a little bit led us astray, because when we talked about it originally, we were talking about looking at the other resolutions that already existed for the business districts, and so I was thinking we were going to get something very similar to that, and what we got was something nowhere remotely close to it. I think the latter points that you made about restaurants having been empty, I think your son made those points, too, about them being empty for so long. I think we highlighted a new project coming in during our State of the City, our mayor did a great job of highlighting that. I think if you literally threw this resolution away and started again, and talked about the fact that it's about branding, you know, bringing more life to an area that has been vacant or hasn't seen new businesses grow, maybe identifying partnerships with other cities. You've mentioned the Beach Corridor, lots of cities are taking interest in that, so maybe highlighting that as one of your whereas is, because if you look at, for instance, the Grove District, they talk about the agreement or the partnership that started with Great Wolf, which it wasn't done at that time, and then, so you, you put in those whereas is where things are anticipating, and kind of change 180 from where it is right now, I think we can have more discussion about it and potentially allow for this to pass, but as it currently stands. it currently stands, and with the sentiment that it currently stands, I don't think it's appropriate.
I just want to jump in and try and console and comfort my colleague, Chris. I think, I was, I figured this would get a little buzz. I had no idea this would get as much stir as we all saw, observed this week on social media, so I was kind of surprised. But I do think it comes down to the language, the wording, people's interpretations of that. I think the, I, I know you, meanwhile, over there, and I know the intentions were pure, so, and you've taken a lot of feedback, and you intend to go back and do that, so I support that. I would, I would say, you know, I'm striving to achieve a unified Garden Grove that's desirable from the outside looking in. I think we've made great strides in that regard in recent years through Reimagine and other efforts to get people's attention. We've got High Rise Hotels and Great Wolf Lodge, that is Garden Grove. We've got our Reimagined Downtown coming in with Steelcraft and Cottage Industries and things like that. And I agree, we've been working together over on Valley View, trying to make stuff happen. We've got some stubborn property owners there that we're trying to get off the dime to come, come to the table. So anything that could help productively from an economic development standpoint, from a branding standpoint, I think is, is worthwhile. I don't see any negative in a city celebrating its various neighborhoods or districts. A lot of cities do it, Santa Ana, Washington Square, Floral Park, whatever, those things, but they're all proud to be part of Santa Ana, right? You could say that across a lot of large cities, right, is, in Garden Grove too, Little Saigon, we actually don't call it the Harbor Corridor, only OCTA does. We call it the Grove Resort District. We used to call it International West. We've rebranded and renamed different corridors different times. The Korean Business District, Central Garden Grove and its big lots, there's a lot of special areas in Garden Grove, and the West Side has always been unofficially known as West Grove, so I don't see any harm in doing this as long as the wording is straightened out to kind of realign the intent. And if I had any suggestions, I would just say, one, you know, we're one year into going into district representation, and this is just a formality that kind of highlights the district in West Garden Grove, right? So that's one part of it. And then also, like you've stated, the focus on branding and economic development, whatever, I think there's a lot of positives that could come out of creating that stir. From an economic development standpoint, we do not own the land, we only have certain tools. We've got the carrot and the stick, right? We can do code enforcement, or we can entice people to come in, and the only thing we can really do is cheerlead and say, try and draw attention and say, hey, come look at this area and consider doing a project here. So any kind of branding efforts help, help achieve that. So I'm, I'm supportive of a reworded.
Yeah, well, and I can very much do that. I would also like to add that even in the discussions with our economic development plan that we're working for the entire city and talking to the consultant, he emphasized a business improvement district, and that's what I had in mind for setting that up as well. Branding, business organizing businesses there, having their private input, their involvement in this, so. There are certain areas, we know the area pretty well, it's, it's, so that was, that was the intent. I could certainly revise the resolution. Again, I didn't, my intentions were not to upset others in the city. You know, I think there's one combinator we all learned, or at least I learned in this process, and that is everybody is passionate and deeply caring about this city, wherever you live.
Yeah.
And this is like us versus them, I didn't want that, we're all Garden Grove, and they will be on board with that as well.
Strive to bring all Garden Grove together. Yeah. Okay, so what's the, what's the game plan here? Is it coming back?
I intend to revise it.
At the next meeting?
Yeah, I'd like to, or, no, I don't know if there's a next meeting, is there? May? Yeah, give me, give me a couple, couple meetings, and I'll get something together. I want more input, more vetting.
Does he have to continue it to a date certain, or does that matter, or does?
No, that's only for public hearings.
Okay.
This is not a public hearing, so.
Okay. Okay.
But I do want to add, I won't, I won't, I'm not getting back down to my pride of my area, as we all will. We're all, we all love our areas, love the city, and I'll be a champion and advocate for my area as well. So I put that forward to say if I was over.
Zealous.
Zealous, yeah, thank you for pushing it forward, that was the reason. Not at the, at the, contrary to other districts as well. So please, let me be clear on that.
Thank you. Do we need a formal action to continue it, or it just doesn't matter because it's matters?
Okay. So long as the council is agreeable to bring it back, I mean, this was, the motion was to bring it back to this meeting. So I think that for the record, if the council agrees to bring it back at a future meeting, that would be sufficient. That's what I like to be.
Thank you. Second.
It's hard to record nods on the record.
So you want, you want a formal action to, yeah. So you want to make a motion to?
Oh, yeah, move to, yeah, continue to a date.
To a near-future meeting.
Yeah, to a near-future meeting.
And I'll second that. Call to vote.
Councilmember Beard?
Yes.
Councilmember O'Neill?
Yes.
Councilmember Tu Hauwin?
Yes.
Councilmember Klevenstein?
Yes.
Councilmember Kim Nguyen?
Yes.
And Mayor Jones?
Yes.
Motion received, six yes votes, with Councilmember Bowie absent.
Thank you. Any matters from councilmembers?
How are you?
Oh, you've heard enough of me.
Yeah.
No, I want to thank Nick Dibs for this information on the follow-up for Youth and Government Day. I'm an advocate for that, too.
I just want to let people know we are available. I was concerned, someone that spoke said they didn't, couldn't get ahold of us. I don't remember an email that I didn't respond to. I always try to respond. I have office hours, you can always call the, the city manager, secretary, and make an appointment with a council member, so please do that. Individually, we can speak with you, I'll be happy to do that at any time. Thank you.
Well, as we approach April 30th, it's marked the 43rd anniversary of Saigon Fall, and it's a black April, so it's a commemoration to the Vietnamese-American communities. And the next thing, I just want to say, happy birthday to Mr. Scott Stiles. Would you like us to sing with you? So happy birthday.
Kim?
I lost my train of thought. Last week, we had, we participated in an event at San Diego High School called Evening With Your Elected, which was a phenomenal event. Student organized, the Young Senators Club at San Diego High School invited us, councilmembers, myself, Stephanie, the councilmember Klevenstein, and Mayor Steve Jones, as well as our city manager, Scott Stiles, and various other departments to come give a presentation. I like to say that it was the State of the City meets Garden Grove 101, and I think the students learned a lot. Some of their parents were in attendance, and it was really good to see our youth engaged in wanting to learn about how local government works. Oftentimes, you can ask a person who their representative is, and they can't name on any level of government, so I was excited to see that.
Thank you. Stephanie?
I think my update's going to be more vector-related. We had a meeting recently, obviously, as we head into the summer months, we know that the mosquitoes really ramp up, and the, the opportunity for West Nile virus is present. So obviously, the district is working very hard on their communication efforts and their media efforts. They have sent to myself, and I think to the, to city staff as well, some information on their updated marketing campaign for the mosquito season coming, coming online now, as well as updating their website and really working hard on their outreach efforts. So I think their new website will launch June 1st, and I'm sure as we get deeper into the summer months, we'll have more information on the City of Garden Grove's West Nile page, and I'll make sure to give updates from the DIAS as well.
Thank you. Scott?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, members of council, just a couple of quick things. I know Councilman Bowie wanted me to just mention and remind people, he was, he was going up to Sacramento to help promote the resolution that all of you approved, I think at the last meeting, on the Vietnamese education program that Senator Nguyen was helping to sponsor. So he's, he wanted to go up and, you know, do some follow-up on that. I do want to mention to you, at this morning's Garden Grove Chamber of Commerce Board meeting, the board wanted me to expressly thank all of you and thank all of the city for their participation. I know many of you attended their, the Women's Division Silver Spoons event over the weekend. They were very appreciative of all the support of all of you and also the staff that attended. Their event continues to get larger and bigger every year, and so it's something that they've been really excited about. I wanted to mention that. And then finally, just on behalf of all the staff with continuing to move the Galleria Project forward, I want to personally thank Lisa Kim, all of the staff in the Planning Department, and everybody who's put so much work on this. You know, this is a project we've all heard way too much about over the years and usually not in a positive light, and I think this is a big psychological hurdle we're jumping over as a city, and hopefully, we can get to the point of seeing, cutting a ribbon on that property and having it open for seniors and everybody else. It's going to be a, a good day for the city, I think, when it opens. So I just want to thank the staff, put a lot of hard work into this, trying to move it along as quickly as we can. It's been a really complicated project, lots of players involved, including the Boys and Girls Club, the Hope Foundation, developers, and everybody, so thanks to our staff.
Thank you. Ah, yeah, that thing.
Mayor, council, I do have a report out of a closed session today on the first item in closed session. The city council did unanimously approve pursuant to claim with the Commission for State Mandates regarding the statewide trash provisions of the stormwater permit and the order issued by the Regional Water Quality Control Board. And that's my report.
Thank you. And with that, we are adjourned.